Welcome to the December 15, 2022, last meeting of the planning board town of Poughkeepsie. Please start by joining me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Just so you know, the weather's looking okay at the moment. We're in a pocket of rain around us, but be careful going home. It's gonna be, you know, it shows maybe ice here to the west and the north and even to the south. So, start up, our first one on the agenda is Peterson fill permit. So, see you guys are all set up. Let us know what transpired since your last visit.
Okay, Joseph Berger, Berger Engineering for the applicant. Basically, we responded to all the comments, we believe. It's no real big change. We still, we did add the gas station in as part of the application because the owner owns both sites. The fill is still the same. We're filling the one lot which has the three, it used to be three houses. Only one derelict house is left. Two were taken down. As said before, that one house will be demolished as the first item, then we move on to fill. We're filling up to that retaining wall. The retaining wall in the gas station is slightly higher than the lot that we're filling. So basically, the retaining wall goes away once we fill. There is, so we're gonna be at the grade of the gas station. So it's a continual grade all the way over. I think that may have been a, it may sound like we're gonna be above the grid of retaining the gas station because it wasn't clearly said in our part. So if you went out there in the field, you'll see.
I'm working on it.
The Zoom, I love it.
Mr. Lapine's trying to.
Since then, we also had the wetland updated by James Bates. So we have a current wetland location surveying shown on the plan, which didn't change too much from the original one he did a couple years ago, but slightly. So we have the new location and the new areas that are being disturbed. And we added a little bit more detail on how we're gonna fill. We're filling one on three slope with the geotextile grid on it to better sustain it so it doesn't erode. And we feel that's a workable slope to work with. And that's pretty much the changes we made, other than minor things that we've replied to based on the comments from your consultants in the board. We did note that the, Carol mentioned the working time for the turtles. We agree with that. We assumed there would be a time restriction from when we could do to meet the time for, which was from April 1st to September to, because turtle, a landing turtles were found somewhere across the street somewhere, and we want to protect them. So we will put that on the map in the net, you know, as part of conditions or when we update the map for submissions to town for those date restrictions. Also the restriction for obviously the Indiana bats, there's tree restriction time. We'll have that on there as well, along with the restriction for the turtle time period.
All right. Thank you, Joe. And you've clarified a couple things already. Eric?
Sure. This project, it's before the board for land contour permit and also for aquatic resource permit, was advertised for public hearing. So the board should tonight open the, open the application for a public hearing. And then the staff recommendation is to close the public hearing and to consider granting secret negative declaration and permit approvals. If you're inclined, you have a negative declaration for that purpose in your packet. It's a draft form. Most of the, many of the issues are addressed. A lot of our comments focused around some technical details on the plans and clarifications. Thank you for addressing the retaining wall issue, where the fill is. I guess the board, I'll let Carol map speak about the species analysis. I think the only other thing I'd add would be to, in looking at it, I realized that a lot of the notes on how the landfill would be conducted are in the response letter. So I think I would just recommend the board add to the comments here that the landfill contour procedures be added to the plan as notes. And that way, nobody, if there's any question, we don't have to go back through the documentation. It'll be right there on the plans.
I concur.
Sounds good.
I should have done that. Ran out of time.
Well, it's good. Consolidated in one place.
We'll certainly add that. There was no intention to leave it off. It was a mishap. We will definitely add that. That's where it should be.
Great. Thanks, Joe. Andy?
Yeah, so, you know, Joe already kind of, you know, addressed the retain wall issue that was my, one of my primary concerns. And then the only other thing is I would recommend that we kind of work with the sewer department to make sure that they're comfortable with the access for the existing sewer easement along the north side of the property. I think three on one slope should be okay. I just want to make sure they don't have any equipment that wouldn't be able to traverse that slope.
Well, in the area of the sewer, it's gonna be flat because that manhole in the back is already raised at floodplain elevation. So we'll make that pretty level. The three on one is more away from where the sewer easement. We did walk it with the former sewer superintendent before he retired and got his comments, but we'll certainly work with the current sewer department to make sure it's workable and the surface what he needs. Absolutely. We'll, we'll do that. And anything he wants us to do, we'll add to the plan before you sign it. Absolutely.
Okay. That's it for me.
All right. Thanks, Andy. And Carol, see you're on now.
Yeah, just a comment to Eric. It is Ilver and Elster County. It's snowing quite hard. There's accumulation, so. Okay. Basically, most, most of my questions have been addressed. I do request that, and Joe had sent me an email, and I'm going to get back to Jim Bates. On the DEC environmental map, or it indicates the species, the location, the vicinity of animals listed as endangered or threatened, contact DEC. So we know that the bats are in the area, but this is probably just exclusively referring to the landings turtles, which are known to be in the area. So the comment is basically just, I do not think it is an issue because of the location, but as we have had all the adjacent folks do that, because DEC has said contact the DEC, we just have to have the applicant, you know, send the information to DEC. And they're probably gonna say, you know, the restrictions that we've added, they may also request the turtle barrier, which basically you're putting up a fence. It just has to comply to make sure that's also a turtle barrier. But just contact the DEC, get that in the record, and whatever they are requiring for compliance, we'll just, we're gonna just require that.
We concur. We'll, we'll do it.
Any other comments? There's some on the plantings as well, I think, Carol?
Oh, yeah, the plantings basically, you know, originally indicated that, you know, we need some, some plantings back there to bumper. And the applicant has added, added plantings. The back of that property is a jumbled mess of mostly invasives. If they're planted further back as they're indicated, they probably won't survive. So our thought is to move them up closer to the edge of the fill, at the edge of the fill or perhaps even on the fill and plant, and, because you're gonna be clearing a little bit behind there, just to give those plantings a little bit better of an opportunity to take hold and to do what we're really wanting them to do.
As long as they're not in the way of any future plans that you guys have.
No, I think that's a great recommendation, and we, we will do it.
Okay. Thanks, Carol.
No problem.
It's on for public hearing. So I move we open the public hearing?
Second.
Moved in second. Call to question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes four to zero. Anyone on the call or in the audience wish to comment on the Peterson project? Anyone in the audience know? All right. If you're on Zoom, you can unmute yourself or star six to unmute the phone. Or wave your hand on the Zoom.
Jump up and down.
Yep. Not seeing anyone. Seeing none, I move we close the public hearing.
Second.
Moved in second.
Hang on. Hang on.
Was there somebody?
Yes, hello. I am a resident that, whose house is right across from the area where this new project is being proposed. And I do have concerns that I wanted to voice.
State your name and address for the record, please.
It is Sunjitma Gambold. And I live at 142 Kingwood Park.
Are you sure it's on this application?
This is the wrong application.
We're on the, we're on. Yeah, we'll, we'll let you chime in when that one comes along. The Casper Kill.
Great. Thank you very much.
All right. Anyone else? Okay. In this case, I move we close the public hearing?
Second.
Moved in seconded. Call to question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes four to zero. All right. Go around the board for last comments on this one. Peter?
Just, just one quick question for the town engineer. On the title sheet for the fill permit, there's a note, fill material must comply with the requirements of Poughkeepsie town code and so forth. Does that, we covered pretty much by that?
Yeah, we asked, we asked them to add that, that note on the plans to make sure that the fill material was acceptable for, you know, there wouldn't be any voids or any issues created by the material that they're bringing in.
But we have a standard with regard to the quality of the fill itself.
Yeah, that's in the town code that can be compared to.
All right. Thanks, Peter. Ben, anything?
No, that was my question. Peter took care of it. So I don't have anything.
Rocco?
Yeah, one quick, I noticed that this is an awful lot of fill. Now, where are you getting the fill from? And do you need any type of permit to extract that fill?
We don't have a source. Most likely, we'll be getting it from one of the gravel pits or one of the local places, but we'll be looking for that. At the end, it'll be, I'll be responsible for making sure the fill is clean and taking samples and providing those samples to the town before it comes on site. So wherever we get it from, whether it be Red Wing, crap rock, Dutchess Quarry, they already have permits for providing fill.
Okay. And do we need anything on the plans for something like that? Or does that?
That note would cover it. I mean, if they're, if they're purchasing it from a quarry, there isn't gonna be a problem.
Okay. Yep. I'm good. Thank you. All right. Thanks, Rocco. The only question I had, are you compacting the fill also as you go?
Yes, and I think that's in the standard. And I believe I have notes on that, I guess.
Okay, I guess I missed that. All right. Thanks. In that case, I move the planning board to determine the proposed Peterson fill permit project would not have a significant adverse effect on our environment, and that no environmental impact statement will be required for the reasons set forth in the secret negative declaration for an unlisted action dated December 15, 2022.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Call to question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes four to zero. I move that the planning board grant conditional major land contour permit and conditional aquatic resource permit approval, subject to the following: respond to comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies, and responses to be reviewed by the planning department as to adequacy and completeness, including but not limited to the following items one through 11. I thought you were gonna put the control procedures on there also. Or is that, we should put that in there? The one we talked about earlier that Eric suggested that we include? Oh, yes. Last has comments at the planning board meeting, but we'll say specifically 12, add the content, the notes to the, to the site plans.
Second.
Excuse me, I am so.
I'm sorry. Move to seconded. Call to question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes four to zero. All right. You guys are good to go.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Safe trip home. Next up is 824 Main Street.
Excuse me?
Yes.
Can someone please unlock the door? It seems to be locked, and my husband cannot get into the hearing.
Okay, someone's out, heading out right now. All right, thanks. Thank you. I don't know which door they're at. These things have a way of changing. All right, guys?
All set?
Yep.
All right. Good evening. My name is John Andrews. I'm with the firm of Road East Lake Island Andrews. We are here with the client, Danny Petrizzo, to review 824, 826 Main Street. Since the last time we were here, we made a submission that we addressed most of the comments. There is one comment that Mr. Lern has about the handicapped access out the rear. If you remember, we have a small planter that we proposed next to the rear door on the south side. I posed that question to the architect after the last meeting. The architect claims that that's going to be an egress door. The egress with the, with the planter there is satisfactory for his purposes. If we need to make some adjustments, obviously we will, but I'll try to work with Mr. Lern to get that resolved. Our intent is to make sure that, that we meet the requirements for egress as set forth by the architect. Other than that, I think we've addressed most of the concerns. We did attend the zoning board of appeals meeting. We did receive a variance from the zoning board of appeals. We sought two. One, they was not ripe, so they kind of delayed it, and that deals with parking, because the issue of parking falls with this board, and you do have the ability to waive it. But the other variance was, where we exceeded the residential density. If you may recall, we're seeking six units.
Yes.
We only have a quarter acre. We would need an acre. I had been advised, although I don't have the final wording, that we were, our variance was granted. So we do have a variance allowing the six units as proposed. And other than that, we're looking to complete the process with you folks. And we do have rendering, so we are in a position, should you choose to go that direction, to ask for architectural review as well.
All right. Thank you. See, this is Kristen. She's unable to make it tonight, so Michael, Michael fill in here.
Yep, covering for Kristen tonight. So as John mentioned, this is, it's before the ZBA on Monday night, they were granted the variance for the density. It's on for secret review, lot line review, special use permit and site plan review, and then ultimately architectural review tonight. We really don't have many comments remaining. There's an access door on the eastern side of the building that they'll require that there be some, a blanket access agreement between this property and the neighboring property, also owned by Mr. Petrizzo. So that can be worked out as, you know, a condition of approval. And that's really it, unless Andy has anything else.
Yeah, I mean, as, as John mentioned, I'm happy to work with them to resolve the egress issue. If, if that's what's required, that's fine. I just raised, wanted to make sure we're good there. I am asking for some shielding or just to verify that the existing lights and proposed lights are shielded to prevent any offsite glare. Shouldn't be too big of a deal. And then just, just to verify that the slopes for the ADA parking and access are comply with.
Understood, and that was on my schedule, but obviously, weather hasn't been cooperating. I was supposed to be out there today, and I didn't get there. So, but we will get that information. There's no, there's no showstopper here. Everything is pretty straightforward.
All right. Thanks, John. Thanks, Andy. It's on for public hearing, so I move we open the public hearing?
Second.
Moved in seconded. Call to question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes four to zero. Anyone wish to comment on 824 to 826 Main Street project? In the room or on Zoom? Anyone in the audience here for the 824 to 826 Main Street project? No? Anyone on Zoom? You can unmute yourself. Raise your hand. Everybody still muted us? Seeing none, I move we close the public hearing?
Second.
Moved in seconded. Call to question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes four to zero. Let's go around the board for comments. Start with Rocco?
Yeah, I don't have many comments. I'm, I'm just curious. When I'm looking at your layout here and these preliminary floor plans, and the retail spaces there in the front for the first two units, I don't quite understand what those rooms are. Or maybe I don't have to understand what those rooms are. I guess it's just, it just seems a little curious what they are. I mean, are they, are they like three separate stores within that one rental unit?
I can answer that. So your questions are about the two retail spaces?
Right, the ones in the front.
They are completely existing. One space is about 100, 850 square feet. The other one's almost 1,000 square feet. One of them hopefully is rented, and the other one, you know, those spaces have, they're existing. So one of them has an egress to the parking lot. The other one is just a front door. So those are existing. We're not changing anything to those. And obviously, you know, if I get a good tenant, which is the challenge, that's why I'm asking for the three apartments in the back, because no one's gonna rent the 4,000 square foot building. These walls are non-bearing. They could be taken down and customized to whatever tenant I land, and hopefully a good tenant.
Okay, so they're, so they're not the.
Like the little spaces, they're irrelevant to a certain degree. You know, if someone wants to gut them all out, God bless them, they, they put equity in my building and make it nicer. But, you know, the walls, you know, it seems like the one on the right, people like, I had it rented, but somebody bailed. I actually have a meeting at 7:30 with someone that wants to do medical training. Hopefully she bites, and, and we would have to take one wall down, but obviously, we'd go through the whole building permit situation. Yeah, so like, those walls there, I'm not fond of any of them. I'd rather an open space, retail, whatever. But they are existing.
Okay, so I got it.
So it's, does that answer your question?
Yeah, it does. I mean, someone may want the wall, so.
Right. You know, I, I think it's a second meeting with the lady tonight, like I mentioned. She might want to take one wall down, and obviously, we'd get building permits and all that good, good stuff and do what we need to do.
No, that's it. Thank you. Ben?
No, I don't have anything.
Peter?
This is a great example of adaptive reuse. Mr. Petrizzo did a great job with 830 Main, and I'm sure he'll do a great job here.
Okay. Let's see. My only comments, I think Andy mentioned something about light shielding, and look at that. And I have some architectural comments when, when you get to that stage.
Yeah, with regards to the lights, the lights are, most of them are existing, and they're, they're wall mounted wall packs, and they do have a directional element to them, but may need some additional shielding, and we'll see what we can do. But most of them are existing.
Sounds good. All right. With that, I move that the planning board hereby determines that 824 to 826 Main Street would not have a significant adverse effect on the environment, and that no environmental impact statement will be required for the reasons set forth in the secret negative declaration for an unlisted action dated December 15, 2022.
Second.
Moved in seconded for secret. Call to question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes four to zero. I move that the planning board grant conditional lot line revision approval and also grant a one-time 60-day time extension as permitted by town code. Of said approval from Monday, February 13, 2023 forward to Friday, April 14, 2023, subject to the following item one.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Call to question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five to zero, ah, four to zero, sorry. And finally, I move that the planning board grant conditional special use permit approval and conditional site plan approval for 824 to 826 Main Street, subject to the following: respond to comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies, and response to be reviewed by the planning department as to adequacy and completeness, inclusive of but not limited to the following items one through nine.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Call to question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes four to zero. All right.
I must ask, at the risk of raising the wrath of my client, but the matter of parking needs to be resolved in some fashion.
That was assumed, that's in the comment. It's a way, it's.
Thank you.
Because we, yes, we discussed last time, we discussed last time that you can have to talk to yourself because you have, you have extra parking at the 830. So if a need arises, you can.
But being that there's an egress door, tenants are gonna do what they want to do, and we got plenty on my side. So, you know, I didn't have to really beat myself up. And people are gonna park where they're gonna park, and I'll let them. So I appreciate the waiver, and thank you.
Thank you very much.
And you said some tenants did not even have a car at this time.
What's that?
Some tenants did not have a car at this time.
Yeah, for example, on 824, there's three apartments with only one vehicle.
So. So I'm sure you'll manage it as maybe.
Yeah, and I'll let them park wherever they want.
And now for architectural review. I see you have a couple pictures displayed here. So you're prepared for architectural?
I did see a comment. There was a comment about beyond the painting, correct? I don't like the look of the building. I will do, it's not gonna be stucco. It's gonna be like a diamond, diamond plate and a concrete finish. So you won't see cinder blocks, and it'll be a clean, smooth surface. That's part of my plan on, just like the rendering, you know? It'll show a clean surface. Besides painting, I am gonna, gonna do a coat of concrete on the planet wing side, because I, because I just don't like looking at it.
Yeah, I was, I was about to say, you know, you got peeling paint, you got some crumbling, crumbling block in a couple spots.
Yeah, so it'll be a smooth surface, because I gotta look at it every day, all day. So it'll be, besides painting, it'll be a nice smooth surface.
Do you have a color in mind at this time?
The color that's on the rendering, it's a light gray. And I'm also doing repairs to 824 right now. If you guys want to drive in the back, see my beautiful decks, and siding will be up by the next week. So it's gonna be awesome.
Okay.
So it's a light gray. I don't know what Carlo, the architect, expects, but it's pretty much that rendering.
Any comments from board members on the architecture?
I think, one comment. I drove by there the other day. It's, and I'm glad that you're doing all that now. I forget, the parking lot, does, should that be resealed? Are you gonna restripe it?
Oh, it's gonna be new blacktop, because I gotta do, put a water. So full blacktop, full stripe.
Any?
I'd rather do it now and not later. It'll be dark.
I'm satisfied with that. That's great. You guys have any architectural comments? In that case, I move we accept architecture as presented.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Call to question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes four to zero. We're good to go.
Awesome.
Thank you very much. Merry Christmas and happy holidays, everyone.
Happy holiday. Thank you. Safe trip home. All right, now we get to Faith Assembly at Casper Kill.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Christopher Lapine with Lobella Associates.
My name is John Morabito. I was asked to represent the church by Pastor Sam.
I'm Kevin Marin from Casper.
Hey, guys. Welcome back.
Nice to see you.
And I want to present what's changed since you've done since last time. Just to kind of give you a brief overview for those listening.
Yeah, can you speak right into a mic, Chris? Because it's.
Sure. Yep, thank you. Give you a brief overview of the project for those who are listening for the first time. Faith Assembly of God and Casper Kill One LLC are co-applicants in a lot line change, and also a site plan amendment for Faith Assembly, which would involve the relocation of 200, I'm sorry, 165 spaces from their current parking lot in the front of their facility to the northeast corner of the property. It would be divvied up into three areas of 115 spaces, 26 spaces, and 24 spaces to the northeastern corner of the property. As a result of the lot line change, 2.7 acres would be reduced from the existing 26.75 acres of Faith Assembly and dedicated to Casper Co. One LLC. Casper Co. One LLC is currently 345.42 acres. It'll result in 348.12 acres. To give you an overview of what we did from the last presentation where we were before you, the changes were relatively minor. We were asked to denote some snow storage areas, which we did here in the. We were asked to denote uh, some snow storage areas, which we did here in the lower parking lot, over here in the parking lot. We also have it in the upper parking lot over here. We've also incorporated uh, some guide rails on the lower end of these parking areas here. Um, over here around the turn here where we have a drop in the slope, uh, that was some of the other changes that were requested. There's a question to clarify the total number of overall ADA spaces on the site. Uh, I believe only fifteen are required. Uh, but we're currently showing uh, in excess of fifteen on the property. Uh, we have fifteen spaces already uh, within their existing location. Uh, we're also adding in the vicinity of our new project area an additional five spaces, I'm sorry, additional two spaces. So we're already in excess of what's necessary for the site. We prepared a stormwater pollution prevention plan, which incorporates an infiltration basin located on the uh, southeast corner of the Faith Assembly project area. Uh, just for the board's awareness, um, the drainage from the area of development all overflows onto the driving range. Uh, within the driving range, there is a large-scale depression where runoff accumulates and eventually infiltrates into the ground there as well. So we're going to, for water quality purposes, do some infiltration on our site and then it'll continue to overflow and infiltrate into the ground on the Casper Kill uh, site. We have not had the opportunity to do test pits. Uh, we assumed it was going to be similar because of proximity to the uh, golf course. Uh, but we do have them scheduled, uh, which Andy had to let you know, uh, for next week, um, so that your office can witness those. And the one other change we made, uh, there was some concerns about where we're connecting for the yard hydrant, whether we're coming off of an existing main and whether that would be metered, uh, because it, that particular uh, water main led to a hydrant. So what we did was, we're going to be routing the yard hydrant from internal to the building. We're going to tap off the domestic line, which is, we know, metered. I believe that was the major uh, overall substance of the major changes associated with the project. Uh, we did clarify a few other minor things such as restoration of the former parking lot area, which would become uh, lawn. Uh, for those who who were questioning that before. So we're open to any other questions that the board may have or their consults.
All right, thank you, Chris. Uh, this was also Kristen, so.
Okay, I'll do my best. Um, so this is on for seeker review. It's a lot line review and amended site plan review. Um, the uh, comments on on the site plan side are are fairly minimal at this point. Chris actually addressed a few of them. Um, I think there's some more significant uh, questions on the engineering side, which Andy can cover in a minute. Uh, the, this is on for public hearing for the first time tonight. Um, so um, I I believe there are a number of people who are uh, signed up to speak on that. Um, so.
Yep.
Uh, we'll have to see whether we're uh, would want to return. Uh, we might need to for, based on Andy's comments uh, at the end of the the meeting.
All right, thanks. Dig into it, Andy.
Sure. Um, you know, as as Chris mentioned, you know, with the stormwater pollution prevention plan and the infiltration basin, we do need to see some soil testing um, before, really before they move forward, just to verify that the practice is going to work. Um, based on what Chris is telling me, the the area already infiltrates, so it's likely to work. We just need testing to verify that. Um, Chris mentioned the guide rail. Uh, we are asking for a little addition, a bit more guide rail around the the uh, the twenty-four lot parking space where there's some fill in that area. Um, looking for some clarification. Glad to see the 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 reduction in pervious, um, where the parking spaces are being removed. Um, just want to have uh, some additional um, controls there to make sure that the runoff that's washing off that existing parking lot doesn't wash out. You know, the new pavement that's, there are new grass area that's being established. So again, that's that's something that can be addressed. It shouldn't be a big deal. Um. Looking for a little bit of, a little bit more traffic signage. Uh, there's a, there's a, there's a note or a pavement marking proposed for the existing parking lot on the south side of the lot, uh, where the new entrance is located. Uh, it looks like it's intended to be one-way. We just want to see, see that signed. Um. There's an existing uh, water and sanitary sewer easement that may require modification. We just want to verify that doesn't require modification a result of the subdivision. Um, and then we have some, just some kind of detailed type comments on erosion control and stormwater pollution prevention plan that that need to be addressed, so.
Just for the record, we we did indicate that the uh, there is a modification to the water and sewer easement due to the dedication.
All right, thanks. Thanks, Andy. Yeah, it sounds like we got quite a few things to to review first, and the test pits are needed. All right, this is on for public hearings and we have a couple people signed up, so I move we open the public hearing.
Second.
Moved to seconded, called to question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes four to zero. Uh, we have a sign up here. First in the room is Daniel and Margaret Katz. If you guys wouldn't mind uh, sitting, moving, uh, so that some people come up to the microphones and provide their comments. And we're, we ask people to keep their comments to three minutes, um, or less. I mean, that's fine.
Thank you very much. I'm Dan Katz. This is Molly and we live at one twenty-nine Kingwood Park, which is on the grid.
Right behind it.
Well, just not, not the most affected. Unfortunately, our new neighbors who just bought the property, directly affected, immediately adjacent to the parking lot, are the Levine Tedesco's and they couldn't make it here tonight. Um, their property literally looks on top of the parking lot. So we've been residents for twenty-five years at Kingwood Park and we chose Kingwood Park because of the park-like setting, hence the name, the historic park-like setting there, and there's no streetlights, there's no ambient light at night. And we feel that this is a pretty significant incursion onto the privacy and the uh, natural uh, park-like setting that it is. So um, briefly, I, we have some specific questions if uh, this were to go forward. Um, is the set, is there any variance required for this approval? Or has that already been obtained?
I think the only one that was flagged by the zoning department was related to the sign. Um.
So no, no setbacks issues, Chris?
But I don't think there's any setback issues.
So, so, gi- given the, you know, clear effect that it would have on the residential neighborhood adjacent to it, can, if, even though it's within the scope, is the planning board allowed to request a further setback?
We can look at, we also talked about screening and they have, they have sites of evergreen, evergreen trees.
I do see, I agree with that, that would be um, the second best thing, or or in addition to the setback. The, the number of evergreens that I see there, I think, is insufficient. And so it would be if they, that whole, if they're going to do it, if that whole place could be lined by evergreens to shield the neighborhood.
Yep.
Um.
We can address that.
Okay, thank you. Uh, is there a, is there a certain code for the lighting that is used?
Yeah, the town has a um, a lighting code. Um, lighting has to be shielded and and, you know, basically it's to be dark sky compliant, right? So the light needs to stay on um, on on the site, can't spill over the property lines. We we will be, we have photometrics that we evaluate for.
And are they on like automatic timers that they go off at night, et cetera, or?
We can certainly.
We can talk about that. That was a question I did have for the applicant when they, when they came back up. Does it on yours at night?
So, um, in terms of the neighborhood, that, this is, you know, a neighborhood that has been there, obviously, you know, for hundreds of years and has been maintained as a park-like setting. This seems um, in terms of our property, but it's even our neighbors next to us, even worse, a real incursion onto the quality of life and the value of our property to have a parking lot right behind your house when it used to be a golf course and the buildings that were, are currently there are setback. Um, and I, I, I know that if it's going to be approved, because legally it can be approved, I would really, we would really request significant shielding from not planting three-foot evergreens, but a minimum height of at least like fourteen feet to start, so that it would immediately be shielded and then give a chance to grow and and significantly shield the parking lot from the residential setting behind it.
Great, thank you for your comments.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much.
Take it under advisement.
Uh, can we ask Chris to stop sharing, screen sharing soon?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I'm sorry, Lisa. Yeah, we'll do that. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to comment on this application?
Uh, there what?
All right.
Yep.
Come on up.
I'm sorry, I was a little late. I was trying to get in through the incorrect door, so.
No problem, no problem.
But I found my way. So um, my name is Mark Percy and I am also in the Kingwood Park neighborhood directly across from uh, Faith Assembly uh, at one forty-two. Uh, and I do have some concerns, um, and some that were just inherited by my neighbors. Um, but one of which is, uh, in the proposal, it says, um, you know, it will, the Faith Assembly will adhere to um, the town codes according to lighting. I wonder if that is residential lighting code or commercial and what the difference is. Um, I have a major concern about lighting issues. Um, already from Faith Assembly, um, even if there's no parking lot lights, which I suspect there will be, which of course makes sense for safety, there are headlights. And so if there's an increase in the number of parking spots, obviously, there's an increase in vehicles, vehicle traffic. So there will be an increase in vehicle headlights. Uh, right now, the vehicle headlights point right through the windows of my house on a fairly frequent basis. So I would would um, be loathe to increase headlights. Um, also, um, it says in the proposal that there is no um, other environmental consequences. I think I would dispute that. Um, but actually, even before we move into that, this, this idea um, that there's also in the proposal that there won't be increased noise after a construction period, it's just also false. I think we can see that because there will be increased vehicle traffic. So that is obviously false. This is all predicting the future. It hasn't happened yet, but we, if they want more vehicles, there will be more vehicles, which means more noise. And this will be consistently more noise. This is, as my neighbor said, this is a residential community. It's quiet. Um, I'm wondering if the board actually um, has to change the zoning from residential to commercial or some kind of institutional zoning. If that's the case, then I adamantly oppose that. Um, this is, uh, residential zoning is in place to protect residents and that's what I hope this board will do. Um, protect us from the noise, whether it's light pollution, noise pollution. And lastly, I would like to, uh, there's another line item in the proposal that suggests that this does not impact the environment and that there's been some studies um, to affirm that. Um, obviously, that's also false. This will impact the environment. Anytime you remove natural objects like trees, grass, uh, bushes, et cetera, and replace that with asphalt, that has an environmental impact, right? I think we can all agree upon that. Now, if that's mitigated properly, sure. Now, that would be great, but there will be significant impact on the environment. Um, this is a very rocky area. My basement floods, my neighbors who haven't been here, who, um, did send an email, their basement floods. So when there's significant rain, this is going to wash out and it washes out fast through the neighborhood. There's a problem with flooding throughout Kingwood Park. So I would urge you to re-look at that, please. Um, and in addition to that, one more is this emotion of um, ecosystem impact. Um, there are many animals in that neighborhood right across from my house, which is that forested area on the Faith Assembly property. There are deer, there's red fox, there's a barred owl, and recently, this summer, a pair of falcon. That's no longer on the endangered species list. It was removed in the nineteen nineties, but it is a species of concern. And in the proposal, someone, um, whether it's the board, notes that there is an endangered species called the endangered bat. That is full stop, as far as I'm concerned, and and to the project. Any habitat removal on an endangered species habitat, I think is, am I not correct in assuming, um, uh, against the Federal Endangered Species Act? So I would like to look at that more closely. Um, and that's it.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
There are restrictions for when they can cut trees or anything like that, so.
I'm sorry?
If they cut trees, then there is restrictions for any of the bats.
Okay, and is there any, on the proposal, it said there would be no uh, tree removal. Is that correct?
There's probably a few that uh, we'll have to take, there's not too many. It's kind of, the parking lot's kind of replacing an existing tennis court, which is an impervious uh, surface there already.
I see. So there's a three hundred and five-page dot proposal that, uh, you know, I'm still looking through. But uh, there's also many neighbors. Uh, we received this letter, uh, thank you for Rachel for sending out somewhere around, I think she said a hundred fifty of these letters, but a lot of neighbors that may have today and also ones that are totally unaware of this, um, that I'd be having to make some phone calls about that, have similar concerns.
Yeah, this is the first public hearing.
Right, so I, I would urge some uh, sort of caution and perhaps slowly missbound so uh, other neighbors can see what's happening and I I appreciate your time.
Yep. Don't worry, we're not approving it tonight.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks for your comments. Anyone else in the room? All right, anyone on the, I think there was one person on the Zoom call earlier that was interested in talking about this project?
If you're on the Zoom, please unmute yourself or raise your hand or.
I think it was someone on the phone call.
If you're on the phone and you would, uh, star-stick to unmute, but someone did just raise their hand, uh.
Yeah. Hi, hi, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, Mike Tedesco. Mike Tedesco.
Um, thanks. So uh, my name is Mike Tedesco. Um, I think as the Katz's had mentioned, uh, I own a parcel adjacent to this proposed project. I couldn't, I'm sorry, I couldn't be there today in person. I would have liked to, um, but unfortunately, I, we were not notified of this meeting. Um, so the address is one thirty-five Kingwood Park. The lot number's two five eight one seven nine. Um, my family, my family and I will be building our future residence, basically fifty-five feet from uh, where this proposed parking lot is uh, expected to be put in. We've been engaged with an architect and a builder, um, and we're looking to break ground, uh, probably sometime in the spring. Uh, and we do, I think, as some of my neighbors just attested to, or future neighbors just attested to, we have some serious concerns about how this project is going to impact our use and enjoyment of our future home, uh, which I'll go into. But given that, um, given that I I wasn't really given the opportunity to review this uh, proposal in detail, um, I think I was, I was notified about it, uh, probably an hour before this uh, meeting was expected to start. I would respectfully request that the public hearing be left open, uh, so that I may submit my concerns in writing um, and they can be considered thoroughly by the board.
Yep, it, we're not closing the public hearing tonight, so don't worry.
Okay, thank you. Um, to start, I would just like to mention, and I think some of the residents have already said, uh, you know, Kingwood Park is really, um, it's it's very private. Um, it's a very park-like. Uh, I, my wife and I both grew up in the Poughkeepsie area, um, our whole lives. We graduated from Spacken High School. Um, we know the area well. We selected uh, Kingwood Park as a place for a future home, um, because of the aesthetic beauty of it. Um, and I think this project will severely um, change the landscape, uh, for me and my wife's and my family specifically, but um, also for the neighbors, um, immediately surrounding, um, the proposed project. I, I was able to take, you know, a brief skim through the uh, the proposal. There are over three hundred pages there, um, but I reviewed it, I could. I know there are notes, some notes in the file. The project isn't more visually intrusive than what's currently there, which is a field and a tennis court, but I just don't see how that's possible. A parking lot would include um, obstructions such as parking lights, additional cars, mounds of snow from plows during the winter. And not to mention the footprint of the parking lot is much larger than the existing structure that's currently there. Um, in terms of noise, a parking lot of this size would bring with it significant noise pollution, car alarms, noise from car ignition, and general noise from increased vehicle and foot traffic in the consolidated area. And finally, the light, I know, uh, one of the board mentions that board members pre- And finally, the light, I know, uh, one of the board mentions that, board members previously mentioned that, uh, light cannot spill over the property line, but I'm, I'd like some elaboration on that because I'm not really sure what that means. Uh, I think anybody who's seen a streetlight will tell you, um, that while the light intensity is shining directly at the ground, um, you know, it might not be shining, um, at neighboring properties, but the glare is a completely different issue. Um, and I think the few trees that you have on the proposal, uh, site plan, aren't going to do anything to stop any light from coming through. So those are just a couple of our concerns. Uh, I do have some questions that I'd like, um, answered either by the board members or, uh, the representatives for Faith Assembly. You know, there's a very large existing parking lot on the property, why is that current parking lot inadequate for your needs? Why does the proposed parking lot need to be as big as it is? And have you considered any other locations on this very large parcel of, parcel of land that do not border a residential area, um, for the location of your, of your proposed parking lot?
All right, thank you for your comments, Mike. Do you want me to elaborate on the glare issue or?
Sure, go ahead, Andy.
I can, I can, I can elaborate on the, on the, on the question about glare. Um, the, the way that the town code for lighting, uh, reads is that the light source may not be visible, uh, from outside the property line, so that means that there are shields involved or the LED light fixtures themselves are implicitly designed so that you cannot see the light off-site, the, the light source.
I mean, we're a dark sky compliant town, and so the lights have to shine downward only and be, and have shielding on them. I mean, there's definitely some old lights around the town that is pre-existing, uh, but anything new that gets developed has to comply with the new code.
Right.
All right.
Have there been any, um, 3D renderings of the property of the proposed project in terms of, um, you know, uh, the light, um, light studies where the light would hit, um, and any, any sort of 3D replications of, of what the end product would look like, because I'd like to see those too, I don't know if those are in the packet.
Um, we have lighting maps in the packet, so that's, that's typically how they display it, shows that the, uh, foot candles at the property line and such. All right, um, thanks for your comments, uh, anyone else?
Well, let's just make sure if there's anybody else before we go back, take another one, yeah. And again, if you, try to keep your comments to three minutes or less, that would be appreciated.
We're trying to, with the, with the weather especially, we don't want to stay too late tonight.
Yes.
Yep, who's on it? State your name, please.
Hello, my name is Maxwell Harris, I'm the homeowner in 135 Kingwood Park. Uh, I share my neighbor's concerns specifically around the light pollution and around the environmental impact. Uh, I find it, like they were saying, you know, I, uh, I moved up to, uh, Kingwood within the last year from New York City specifically to live in a neighborhood where there was no ambient light. This seems to be, uh, definitely taking away from, you know, where, main reason why, you know, one of the main reasons why we chose this neighborhood. Uh, and you know, similar to, you know, what my neighbor Mark was saying, uh, I, uh, there's a range of enjoyable wildlife, and I find it very hard to believe that, you know, putting a parking lot on this is not going to impact our, you know, my, my kids, my young kids growing up in this neighborhood and having that experience that I wanted them to have with, you know, seeing, you know, deers and, you know, the fox and, you know, the woodpeckers and all that stuff, uh, growing up in a neighborhood like this. So I'm, I'm very concerned with this, uh, along with my neighbors, and, uh, I'm not as eloquent as them, uh, but you know, I wanted to voice my concerns as well.
All right, thank you for your comments. Anyone else on the Zoom call tonight?
Hi there, my name is Sunea Gambold, and I live at 142 Kingwood Park, my husband spoke earlier. I would like to also chime in that the existing church and, um, parking lot are also already allowed for the, for the neighbors, so adding an additional space for parking will exacerbate the issues that our neighbors are currently facing. Thank you.
All right, thank you for mentioning that. All right, anyone else on the call? Seeing none, I will, we had one other comment in the room here.
Sorry. You gotta, you gotta speak into the microphone, otherwise, yeah, people can't hear you.
Get it on the record.
Yeah. Just to follow up on Mr. Tedesco's question, is, it is a large parcel of land, is, has there been any consideration of this parking lot being placed elsewhere from adjacent to the residential neighborhood?
All right, thank you. All right, uh, I think that's it then for tonight's comments. Think you'd be able to prepare for January or February?
It would be for February, but if I can comment on a number of these raised, I, I just, I just want to make a clarification for everybody in terms of.
Yeah.
The concerns about can you relocate the parking? The intent of the parking is it's being relocated because it's for sanctuary use. Uh, this is not everyday parking, this is only parking when church is in service, uh, so I want to eliminate the concerns that this is going to be a daily occurrence of a hundred and fifty-eight cars. The reason why it's being relocated is because of the distance that the current parking is from the internal sanctuary. Uh, if I, if I can bring up my plan and share.
Sure, Chris.
Kind of give you an overview.
Yeah, I know it's in the location of the old, that old tennis courts there, but, uh, it is bigger than the tennis courts. I will note that.
So, here is the, we're not seeing your screen. Oh, I thought I shared it, I'm sorry. Here's where the existing parking lot is located, in this area.
And it continues, right?
Yeah, it continues, this is where the lot line changes, it continues. So we're, we're relocating these one hundred and sixty-five spaces, and we're relocating them over here, a hundred and sixty-five spaces is approximately what they need for their sanctuary use. Here is the entryway to their sanctuary, right here. So, the opportunity to locate them to the east here is not viable, as everybody's aware, there's a drastic decrease in topography.
Right, there's a big hill there.
Shifting them to the south, where some of the ball fields are, would be of no benefit because you're still at a greater distance away from the sanctuary. So that's the overall intent, is to decrease the distance for individuals going to the sanctuary. Once again, for services only, this is not an everyday use. Uh, schoolchildren will still continue to use the front entrance, we have adequate parking there along the front to accommodate the schoolchildren and the buses. There were some comments made about setbacks, there's a fifty-five foot setback for which this project adheres to. There was a concern about the trees that were placed were small-scale shrubs. Uh, if you look at our plans, we have fourteen to sixteen-foot-high white spruces.
White spruce, yeah.
Uh, we staggered them so that they would screen the adjoining property. There's a concern about headlights, the, the adjoining properties are at a higher elevation than where our parking lots are, so they should not have headlights associated with our particular parking area going into their windows of their homes, because they're elevated at a higher elevation. There was a photometric plan that was submitted, there's exactly zero foot candles of light on the neighboring property line, matter of fact, it's probably cut off at about forty-five to fifty feet from the neighboring property lines. With regards to the variances, someone asked, are there variances required? There's no variances required for this particular application, but there is variances necessary because this is a new application before the board, there are some existing non-conformities already on the site for which we have to go and get a variance for. They include the rear yard setback of the existing building, the height of the existing building, the lot coverage, and the maximum impervious coverage. They're all existing non-conformities, uh, but since we are making a modification to the site plan, we've got to bring the existing non-conformities into conformance. They're not associated with the project, they'd still be existing non-conformities if we did build this or we didn't build this.
Yep. All right, thanks, Chris. And, uh, I guess the other question.
The other thing I did want to mention, someone talked about drainage impacts, there are no drainage impacts associated with this project site. Uh, the rear of our property, uh, if you go to the neighboring properties to the north, they're at a high point, a portion of their drainage comes onto our site, but as I indicated earlier, the drainage associated with where our improvements are, all flows onto the golf course, it doesn't flow onto Kingwood Park.
Yep, goes further south and to the east.
And, and, and I believe, uh, for, for your benefit, Mr. Katz, uh, we wouldn't be impacting, you live approximately right here, we wouldn't be impacting, the parking lot doesn't fall within the confines of your property line as it applies on, uh, our property, so I just think you should be aware of that for the record. Uh, this is not a heavily wooded area of where we are proposing this, um, there is a lot, as you mentioned, the tennis courts, there's sheds, there's trailers back there. Overall, the project reduces the impervious onsite. When you take a look at what we're removing and what we're, uh, providing, because we're more efficient in terms of how we're handling the parking spaces.
The concern was, uh, you know, it's a couple of flooded, flooded basements, so make sure that there's nothing flowing that direction.
Correct, we're not flowing uphill, we're flowing downhill. They're at a higher elevation than us, so they don't need to be concerned about any drainage associated with our project.
Okay, so that's existing within there.
Correct, that, that has, uh, and, and, and there, once again, I want to reiterate, there's no increase in parking, we're mimicking the same amount of parking that's already on the site, there's not one increase in space on this entire site. We mimic what was part of the original approval for Faith Assembly Church, and that's what we have in our site plan.
All right, thank you, Chris, and, and for the neighbors' benefits, uh, you know, our town engineer also reviews all, you know, the applicant's statements about the, you know, the, the lighting and the flooding, et cetera, to make sure that all the stormwater goes the right way. And, uh, I would ask you also, Chris, would you, would the applicant entertain, you know, having a timer on the lights that are on throughout the night?
Certainly, there would be one that turn off.
Turn off, because, I mean, yeah, certain, you know, in the dead of winter here, it's necessary to have them on past five o'clock, perhaps up to five, six, seven o'clock, whatever, but.
It may have to change depending on a holiday.
Right, exactly.
Easter or Christmas or New Year's.
But whenever it's not, not yours.
We can agree to a.
Turn those light, parking lot lights off would be.
We can agree to that.
Okay, great. At this point, I move that the planning board adjourn the public hearing to January nineteenth, two thousand.
Didn't you say February?
Would we have to resubmit?
Yes, you would need to respond to all the comments and that would.
We got an extra week now because we're early this week, but, uh, still through the holidays, so.
Basically, yeah.
Yep, I move, we adjourn the public hearing to February sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question, all's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes four to zero. Okay, we'll go on to board for additional comments, um, Peter.
I share the, uh, some of the concerns that have been expressed, uh, tonight, some of the items that I was underraised. One is, you know, you have thirty parking spaces facing a residential area, and even though the plan is to only be using those spaces when there's services, five months out of the year, it's dark, you know, at four thirty, five o'clock, and I'm sure there, there are going to be instances when those spaces are going to be utilized in the dark. My concern had been, if you nose into these parking spaces, those headlights are going to shine into those residential areas. So if there could be some mitigation, either with a, a fence or shrubs.
In addition to the, uh, the evergreen trees that there.
You have evergreen trees also, Mr. Tedesco, if he could provide us with the, the plan, where he, he, where he plans to, to place his home, because the way that the, the white spruce are placed on this plan, they don't screen the existing house according to the plan that I have at all. So I think you're going to have to revisit that, or get together with Mr. Tedesco, or Mr. Tedesco could contact our planning office, let us know where he's planning to put his house, so we be certain that wherever those white spruce are planted, they're, they're planted in an area that are actually going to screen his house.
Yep, we also want to make sure that, I, I mean, there is some existing evergreens on, uh, I think it was Mr. Katz's property, but we got to make sure that they're, that everything's covered.
It's, it's difficult to determine because the slope here is from northwest to southeast, and that slope is pretty severe on the southeastern portion of that parking lot, I mean, it really drops off, but it's difficult based on the plan that I have to, looking at the elevations, it's very hard to determine what the, what is the difference in elevation between the edge of the parking lot and the edge of, for instance, Mr. Tedesco's property, do you know?
So it, it, it fluctuates between, uh, five feet, uh, and then it narrows down to, you know, his property drops at the corner, he's down to two ten, our parking lot's at elevation two thirty-seven, but there's no, there's no head beams between his lowest point on his parking and ours. But throughout where we are parking, there's a three-foot elevation change in grade in front of our parking that the headlights would have to, you know, they'd have to, you know, they're going to be set probably around elevation, say a foot, two feet off the ground, so they're like around two thirty-nine, so that the existing topography in front of it is still screening the headlights, uh, from the neighboring property.
Okay, if you could just show us the next time we meet.
Sure.
The difference in that elevation between the lot, their, their building lots and the parking lot.
Sure, yeah, and.
That'd be helpful for us to.
Yes, yeah, so you're doing some grading there at the edge of.
Yeah, and I'm, and, and as you said, I'm not aware of where he's placing his dwelling, uh, we can try to incorporate that into the plan.
Chris, some profiles might be useful in this situation. There would be, for sure. But I, I want to assure everyone that has spoken here tonight, we, we recognize those concerns and that we'll, and that we will address them.
Yep, thank you, Peter. Uh, Ben, anything?
Just, has Faith Assembly met with any of these neighbors yet, or are they open to a meeting, uh, to discuss their concerns and how you could?
Sure, we, we'd be more than happy to meet with them, um, and, uh, you know, just, this design was done not with the intent of creating an obstruction, if you look at the grading that was developed for this, uh, you can see that there is a, we did our best to preserve the grading on the edge of our parking, it minimized disturbance to that existing vegetation between the setback and the neighboring property line. Where we did do the disturbance is where we decorated it with, uh, a staggering rows of spruce trees, and once again, we didn't start with four foot to six foot or six foot to eight foot, we went immediately to the fourteen to sixteen-foot-high trees.
The point I was trying to make with, excuse me, the point I, that I was trying to make earlier is that, looking at the plans that, that we were provided.
Yeah.
The screening doesn't even screen the existing, existing house, that's why I think it was, it's a board for Mr. Tedesco to get together with you or with the planning department, let us know where he plans to put his house, so that we know after, if you're going to plant eleven or fifteen, fourteen or sixteen-foot-high trees, make sure that they actually screen his, his home.
We can, we can provide a site plan, sorry, then you're up.
Okay, that's fine, thank, thank you for that.
Sorry.
Yeah, we want to make sure, you know, we address the concerns as much as possible, and I know, you know, Chris does a good job of that in general with the, all his, uh, projects, so.
So I know you're taking all things into consideration, but maybe the neighbors just don't understand because you haven't spoken directly with each other, and that might be beneficial.
We could do that.
To you and them, so you could explain how to alleviate their concerns.
Yep, any changes are always a concern, wouldn't it, when things happen near, near your home, so. Thanks, Ben. Rocko, anything?
Uh, yeah, a couple things, first of all, I echo both Peter and, and, uh, Ben, and perhaps there might be additional law mitigation needed, uh, and plus, when you, you know, when you put up, you said, w- white pine, as, as they grow.
The spruce.
A spruce, okay, they're spruce, not white pines.
Not white pines.
Okay, spruces, okay, even those, as they grow and the branches tend to interact, if they're not far enough apart, they tend to, to die off inside and the screen and effect goes away. Uh, but the other thing is, uh, do we have? But the other thing is, do we have a schedule of when their services are and when these parking lots might be used? Because that might be helpful. Because I think, as Peter says, they will be used other times as well, but primarily when the services are. And the reclamation of the parking lot that will be taken away, is that just going to be a lawn area? Or is there going to be shrubs there as well and some other amenities put in there?
That is intended to be a lawn area.
Just, just a lawn area, correct.
It'll continue, it'll allow sheet flow of the existing parking lot to infiltrate into it. Trying to, there are some concerns that Andrew raised about the existing parking lot and the runoff that comes from it. I think the incorporation of a turf up there will help alleviate some of the drainage concerns that he's raised in this comment.
Comfortable with that?
Yeah, I'm comfortable we can come to, you know, a solution that will work. Carl, if I could add, I mean, maybe one thing, based on what I'm hearing tonight, I wonder if the church would be willing to control access to the parking lot in some manner, you know, with gates or something, if it's only to be used during services? That would help alleviate some of these concerns.
Another concern, I mean, I think Rocco's question about, you know, when services are, I assume a lot of them are in the morning, which won't require lighting and such as well. So maybe when we see that schedule, we can determine if we need to go that route. But that's something to consider, certainly. All right, anything further, Andy?
No.
Okay, we've covered a lot. Yeah, I'll echo everyone else's concerns as well. And you'll let the neighbors know that we're working to address them. And I think Ben's idea of a meeting, if you could meet with some of the neighbors, that would be appreciated. I mean, this is the first time, a lot of them are finding out about it because it's the first public hearing, so we'll go forward from there.
Just one question you raised, Rocco, about did we provide adequate spacing for the trees? We did so that their branches will not kill one another and that they'll maintain. That's shown on our landscaping.
Okay. Thank you. And I had just one left, further question on the trees, if, you know, if they're, I don't know how low the branches go, if some additional shrubs will need it for the lower side to block underneath the branches.
Yeah, where we placed them, once again, I just want to reiterate, we're at a.
At a height, okay.
They're at a higher elevation. And, you know, there's anywhere from a three to five foot change across the parking lot to the grade above it.
Okay, again, as Andy suggested, to provide us with the.
I mean, the other, the other alternative here is if you'd like us to kind of maybe build the berm higher in front of the parking spaces?
We don't want to, we, you know, obviously that raises more concerns about runoff. We want to make sure runoff.
We can, we can deal with any runoff. There's no runoff from our property that's going to go onto the neighboring property.
No, I meant, you're proposing a berm to screen the neighbors?
Yeah, I can, I can build a little berm higher and have a channel that comes for the runoff from their property that comes onto ours, I could still channelize it around ours. But if that'll help alleviate some of the concerns, I can even make this berm a little higher that's already in front of our parking lot.
Okay, yeah, that, you know, some of the cars have, trucks have high lights these days. So I don't know what the maximum height would be, but that's something to consider.
We can do that.
Is there, Andy? I've got one other question. Is there anything in the lighting code regarding a spill off from lights from cars?
It doesn't really address vehicle lights, so that's kind of up to the board.
But that's really where the landscaping and our, you know, our site plan. Which we always, yeah, we always address either landscaping or a fence or something.
Right.
Or a berm.
Right, I know that, but I was just curious if there's, if there's any way to correlate the two. You know, it's the typical car spills off this amount, that car light, and then. And then what do we do to mitigate that?
Okay, yep. All right. Any further last minute comments? All right, I move that the planning board defer actual notice application and direct the applicant to respond to comments in writing of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies, including but not limited to the following, items one through nine and item ten, all of our comments tonight about the light shielding and landscaping and potential berm, et cetera.
Snack it.
Moved and seconded, called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes four to zero. Just a reminder to everybody that the public hearing will resume on February 16th. And again, right here, five o'clock, so. Thank you very much. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, happy holidays, everybody. Same to you, Chris. Safe drive home, everyone. I don't know if it's, I see you out there. Next up is fifty-four West Lee House. Take care, John. Come on down, Steve. All right, we've seen this, you know, application before, but what, your modifications ever made since last time?
I'll let Steve.
All right.
Good evening. In respect to the weather and all that, we'll try to be punctual and brief tonight.
Appreciate it.
Thank you for having us. We wanted to, you know, be in front of you tonight. And again, just to make sure we know everybody.
John Leisher with Tinkelman Architecture.
Ken Casameta with LRC.
And I'm Stephen Tinkelman. So again, we've advanced the project in terms of a lot of the details and in terms of working with the departments. There's still, and Ken can talk a little bit about this work that we're, we still have to do with Andy yet, but we've at least identified those issues. The project hasn't changed in the sense of the number of units that we're proposing to build in the, in the structure. You know, we've, we've advanced the design to some degree. I think there were some good comments at the last meeting about the roof. And so there have been some changes to lower the pitch of the roof from six to twelve to four on twelve, which is a, you know, more normative, you know, roof for that area. I want to also just quickly mention that and also to thank you, but we started construction on the Pork Chop Forty-four Springside. And it's been a long time coming, but we're glad to be underway with that project. So we want to make sure that we, we had a good understanding on the density. There were some questions that Mr. Holman brought up and we've talked through. And it appears that the number of units that we're sharing on the campus are appropriate to the building. I think there's one extra unit that we have left. And we'll meet with Eric again to confirm those numbers. But I think we worked hard at achieving that, and I think that, you know, we're in good shape that way. So we're hoping that you're still good with that direction. The other part of this special permit request is the eight units per acre versus the six. And we talked about that last time and that that's consistent to what we've done with the other properties on the Van Wagner campus. The height of the building, and Eric, please correct me if I'm wrong on this. I think in ATC, we can be seventy-five feet and seven stories were.
With, with.
With special permit.
Yeah.
So what we're proposing here is a building that's about forty-five feet in height. And, and it's essentially a, it's a three-story building, but there's a section that's four stories in the center. So it, the building increases in its height from the ends into the middle of it. And again, we're under, you know, we're in that forty-five foot range, which was, is without the special permit. The parking, we're providing an adequate number of parking spaces to, you know, meet the ordinance requirement. We also are beginning to look at some land bank areas if we need more parking, but we'd rather not put them in. There's a lot that we're, excuse me, coming through that is a single-family lot that we own, which is where the driveway is. And the plan is to rezone that at some point. And there's the ability to add more parking on that, that site as well. We've master planned that in and we'll show that on the drawings. We also have worked through the pedestrian connections. Can we show that? So the idea here is to connect this new structure with the other structures on our campus, both through east and west pedestrian movement so that these tenants can get up to the dog park that we've created previously. There are also sidewalks that are taking you down to Springside Avenue. One of the things that we'll show you, and it's not part of this application, but the sidewalk will then bring you to a crosswalk that will bring you across the street to the town square or the neighborhood square that we're creating as part of the current project. One of the other questions was about the electric car charging stations. We're going to actually do that much more than what is probably in the ordinance because we feel that that's going to be a major requirement going forward for happy tenants. So we'll have that on the map, but we're likely going to set up the infrastructure so that at some point we could have at least one charging station for each unit. We won't do that from the beginning, but you pre-wire the site so that, you know.
Get some conduit in the ground or whatever.
Yeah, seems like smart planning.
Yep.
We've also, with the submission, have a new landscaping plan. And we've worked carefully with our neighbors who are here tonight in the three houses in the front of our site. And the plan includes building a retaining wall over the deeper sections of the site. I guess we have that section we can show. But you can get a sense that there is, the site, you know, has a role to it where there's a tall or wall in the center. Behind the wall, and the wall is on our property, we will have a fence so that the idea of cars and lights and such, that there'll be no impact of car lights because there's a fence. So there's a couple of layers of what we're doing. We also have, if we can show that, there's a considerable amount of trees, existing trees on our neighbor's property. And we've talked to them about the idea of keeping as many of those trees in place as they want. And we're also proposing to put U's on this, on their site in front of the wall to soften it. We can let our neighbors speak, but they've almost requested that we have less planting than more because they like the look of the building and they want to be able to see it. So that's an interesting take on what we're doing. We're still working that through with them in terms of how many, how many trees we'll actually have on the site. But, and then on the other side of the fence, there's a whole landscaping plan, you know, with a treatment so that it softens our parking lot as well. So it's, it's trying to be not only respectful to the neighbors, but also attractive to our tenants. The site, as I think you see, has a lot of topography on it, so the use of open space is complicated. We are looking at the idea of putting a pickleball court in. We still haven't figured out how to do that yet, and we won't probably until we excavate on the site and we understand what the rock will allow us to do. And so we'll come back. We have another idea that we're working with, but, but that's one of our goals in terms of, you know, the amenities on the site. But again, connecting all of our tenants with the other structures and with the other buildings and other projects that you're going to see, we're achieving that here. We've also been working with the Arlington Heights neighbors, and we have agreement from them to allow us to work on their property to create some drainage that Ken will talk about. But they've been terrific to work with to this point. We understand that we're going to need both for the neighbors in the front and the neighbors in the back easements that will, you know, run with the property and such. And so we're in the process of beginning to shape those, you know, for your review, approval, and modification. There'll also be other easements that we're going to need as we have in the past for, you know, along where our driveway hits, you know, Springside Avenue. We've talked to Chrissy Granary about lighting. And our understanding now is that we can light on the residential parcel that we own, which we haven't shown yet in the, in the, in the project. But she says the zoning allows us to do that because we own it. We, again, have to follow the rules of.
For our driveway easing portion.
For, you know, where our driveway is.
Yeah.
We've struggled a little bit with the DOT, and, you know, you, you might be surprised to hear that. But it turns out that the real estate entity in the DOT, there is nobody in that position right now. So having a conversation becomes a little bit more complicated when there's no one who picks up the phone. That being said, we're aware of issues that we need to talk about in terms of both the current project, you know, and the sidewalk that we were talking about to forty-four, fifty-five. But, you know, so we'll, we'll be advancing that. But that's one of the reasons why we don't have any more information on that. One of the things that the zoning administrator also brought up was, you know, the importance that, or that the requirement that our dumpster is, is not within fifty feet of the adjacent property, and it's more than sixty feet. So we, we meet that requirement as well. Again, we're not, we don't have any variances that we're looking for here. We hope that that's meaningful in terms of our planning. I'd like to turn this over to Ken, if Ken wants to speak a little bit on how he's coming with his work.
Sure, we've met with the fire department. We've seen the work out, most of the comments and concerns they've had to date on circulation and movement throughout the site. We do realize there's some comments from Andy on stormwater. We're still working through those details. We do believe there's a solution. Just have to work through the details on how to get to that solution. We're going to arrange going out onsite and taking a look at the neighboring property now that we have access to the Arlington Heights property so that we can arrange a potential solution and how we come up with that solution.
Sounds good. Is there some kind of an easement or a conservation easement on that property, the neighborhood, the Arlington Heights?
Historically, there was a requested easement in the, as we do things now, when a project is approved, it requires the easement to be filed. Historically, it wasn't that way. They were shown on the site plans to say, there's an easement here, you have to go get it. And in this case, the easement was across the property that Stephen now has control over and this project is for a pipe to go from the Arlington Heights property through this property and to the catch basin that we're now connecting to on the neighboring property to the south. That easement was never filed. The homeowner at that time who owned the property didn't want to give into it. So the Arlington Heights water just drains down the hill, goes across this property and into that basin. So we're essentially putting in a system that was originally designed way back when. One of the things that we wanted to talk about is it was designed with a thirty-six inch pipe, which is what there is now. But based on our observations, walking out there, there's very little to no stormwater that is coming down the hill from Arlington Heights. Don't know exactly what's changed. That's why we wanted to go meet with Andy and talk about it. If we can potentially reduce or adjust the pipe size, that'll help in assisting going around the building to alleviate one of the concerns about going under the building.
That sounds like a big pipe, yeah.
So. Yeah, what we found, which was extraordinary, is there's a, you know, kind of a, you know, a swaled area where the water comes from Arlington Heights. And there's a pipe halfway down from, you know, where the houses are, you know, on the south side of that property. And if you look at that pipe, it appears that no water has ever been in that pipe. There's no soil in there, there's no, I mean, the pipe looks like it's brand new. So you're kind of wondering, you know, what is, what's happened there?
Right.
So, so thanks, Ken, on that.
All right. Thanks, guys. Eric, you're going to take over for.
Well, let's see, this is, the project's on for site planning special use permit and architectural review. I believe tonight will be the first time for a public hearing on it. The, there's a number of comments seeking some clarifications. Overall, the density, the residential density is a, is kind of a new concept in this district, but it does seem to work. We've discussed that at length. They're proposing to use the five lots of the campus in common ownership to share. in common ownership to share residential density and the numbers do seem to work out. The final numbers, there may be, it's unclear with maybe one unit or another, but they have, they have the space, the math works.
Okay.
For the five lot, the five lots there would support, to support the proposed 20 units. There would need to be a density covenant similar to that used in Eastdale to ensure the distribution of residential lots, residential units among the various lots into the future. The building, some clarifications regarding commercial square footage because it's as far as we know, it's a residential product, project. It seems like the commercial is really accessory residential. The significance to that is that if it were truly commercial, then some of the residential units over it might qualify as exempt from the density count. So we just need to get that straightened out and we can sit down and do that. One of the lots, lot number seven, was counted towards density and should not be because it's zoned R20 and the density is based upon ATC district requirements and eligibility. However, without that, the math still works.
Okay.
We suggest the board, for the board's consideration tonight pending revisions to plans, we thought that you might want to discuss the screening that you would like to see. Also, the ATC district requires opens, private open space to be provided for the residents to justify the density, but it doesn't specify what, what that should look like. So you should, you may want to discuss that with the applicant. And also the pedestrian connections that Steve alluded to before, where you would, where that, you want to see that go.
Thanks, Eric. Yeah, it looks like he added additional connections there that we were looking for. All right. Andy?
Sure.
The pipe right now is a concern of yours.
Yeah, the, yeah, the pipe is a big concern of mine. We're happy to work with Ken, go out and figure that out. You know, obviously if, if the watershed drain into that is smaller, that, that definitely will make it easier. And I like the idea of routing it around the building rather than going under it. So I think that's, that's, that's a good direction to go. You know, most, a lot of my comments have already been touched on. You know, there's a number of easements that'll be required, you know, which is not anything that has to be addressed at the moment. I had some comments, questions about the grading on the back of the building. Just needs to be kind of clarified a little bit. The, there's proposed sanitary manhole and pipe in Springside Avenue that'll, that'll likely need to be dedicated to the town. So we'll just need to kind of make sure that that's all good to go. There's some soil testing that needs to be done, I believe. Do we, do we already do those already? Okay, sorry. It's hard to keep track. And then I did have some questions about the, the stormwater practice behind the retain wall. Maybe that might need to be relocated. I don't need to get any other, I need into all the other details, but I do want to point out one thing that Stephen mentioned about land bank parking and Ken knows this. You know, if we do have land bank parking, even though it's not built, the stormwater obviously has to be constructed to, to accommodate that.
At this time, we're not proposing any land bait parking for it. We've just looked at the master plan when the others, the other lot potentially gets rezoned, that we know it can accommodate for it at that time, essentially.
Okay. All right. Thanks, Andy. Yeah, there's always a concern that there's not parking for visitors also as well as the residents. Sound for public hearings. I will be open to public hearing. SAGA moves in second and calls to question. All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes four to zero. Anyone in the audience or on the call wish to comment on this application? Come on down.
You'll have to excuse my voice because I just got surgery yesterday on my voice. For my throat, so. My name's Norman Dennis. I live at 29 Parkview Terrace. Okay. I have no real issues with Steve doing whatever he needs to do. I mean, he's been more than fair with us. I mean, with the landscaping and the, the stone wall in the back that he wants to do. And I'd be just, the stone wall is so nice. I really don't care if he planted anything from, you know, on it or not, in front of you or whatever have you, because it's, according to his pictures that he showed us in our meeting. Okay, it seemed to be very fine. And the only other concern I have is when, you know, the, that pipe that comes down over it and I didn't know that you're, I didn't know anything about the way you guys were going to do around the house. He mentioned when we talked to him that he's going underneath the house. I get it. I know exactly. But back years ago, when Arlington Heights created that whole issue, before there was a storm drain that I gave easement to, to put a storm drain, my, that whole backyard flooded. There's something happened. There are over, there are ponds up there. It was one April and it was like, we got like seven inches of rain in one day. It's going back probably 25 years ago.
Okay.
Okay, and it was like a raging river that come down. Matter of fact, Mooney was the engineer back then. That's how long ago it was. And, you know, I tried to get a hold of him and it didn't work and, you know, whatever. So, I mean, I had to be a real pain in the ass. Excuse me, but, but anyway. We, so finally I got them to, you know, put a catch basin down there. So when it came raging down there would actually, because originally it wiped my whole driveway out and everything. Thank God I was just bent there just long enough not to have it blacktopped or whatever have you at that time. It just washed, washed the dirt out from the driveway. In which my truck was sitting like this, just about ready to flow over, it washed out underneath it. So I, you know, I don't know how much smaller you guys are looking to let that down. Now, I don't know, I don't, I don't know the size of the header all the way up, which I think it's 36. I don't know. But, you know, on to how much lower you're going to actually crunch it down.
We will, I mean, we're, Ken and I will work together to look at that and see what the drainage area dictates.
I just wanted to bring you up to date what's happened in the past, so.
Yeah, we want to make sure that doesn't.
We don't have to address it again because I, I mean, Steve's doing a great job as far as I'm concerned. And I, you know, and if I, you know, we usually talk about stuff and it's not an issue, you know, usually if there's an issue or he thinks that there's going to be an issue, he usually has addressed it. But I understand to go around that whole perimeter of his project, you know, okay? For 36 inch, it's very costly. And besides, it's not feasible to do around the building that way. You would have to go underneath it. And the consisting way that property is, it's a bunch of shale. Okay?
All right, so, yeah, they'll.
So anyway, but anyway, I mean, but like I said, I'm not opposed to his project whatsoever. Okay, I would, you know, he's been more than fair with us. He's been really upfront with us and never tried to give us a line of crap. Okay. But anyway, that's it. Thanks for your time.
All right. Thanks for your comments, Mo. Anyone else in the room?
Yeah, my name is Frank Mertlik. I live at 25 or 27 Parkview Terrace. And I agree with Norman. He's, Mr. Tinkelman's been very upfront with us about everything and, you know, he's not tried to pull a wool over our eyes or anything and I agree with the wall and everything, just like Norman does.
All right.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Thanks for coming out and giving your comments, Frank. Anyone else in the room? And anyone on Zoom call? Or if you're on the phone, you can star six to unmute. Or unmute yourself from Zoom and speak up.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi.
Yes, Dylan.
Yes, we can hear you.
Is this the point where Hudson Heritage can be discussed?
Uh, no, not yet. We're, we're talking about a different project at the moment. We'll bring that up later. All right. Anyone else for this project? Not seeing anyone on the Zoom trying to raise their hand. There's one person that's unmuted, Adam. I don't know if that's intentional or not. No, now we get it. All right, I guess not. All right. At this point, I, will we adjourn the site plan and special use permit hearing to February 16, 2023? SAGA. Move to second and call to question. All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes four to zero. All right, we'll go around the board for additional comments. Rocco?
Okay. You guys have touched on a number of key issues here. You know, the EV is, I see you're going to lay some infrastructure for that and the pipe under the belt and et cetera. But regarding parking is one comment I have, and that is if, given that you've asked to reduce the parking from 34 to 30, which leaves it at 1.5 spaces per unit. If I'm a, a guest there, where do I park? If I'm there visiting someone, where do I park?
The adjacent property that we own has the same ratio of parking spaces to apartments. And the parking lot works really well. We've never had an issue with it. So the ordinance requires 30 and so we're, we're putting in what is required. But there, if, if there was an occasion of a party or something, there's new parking that we're putting on the street. There's also, you know, other lots that we own across the street as well that I think in the last version of approvals for the pork chop building, there are cross easements over so that people can park and use reciprocal lots there so we can establish the same arrangement here.
Okay, how will the people know that? How will the guests know that?
Good question. We would let the tenants know how that works and when they sign leases, you know, terms and conditions in the leases, but there's enough parking spaces. But, but, you know, I guess the comment about the on-street parking, there's, you know, there's 15 parking spaces on, on the street and they're not designated.
The on-street parking is kind of unique to this neighborhood, which is good, you know, which I think helps in this regard.
And, and to your other point on that is we're putting sidewalks down from, you know, down the entry driveway. So you'll be able to walk from these spaces to, to the new building and they're also lit. So the, the spaces, the, the pedestrian movements are safe and comfortable and inappropriate.
Right, okay. Just, just a final point on that. I, I know you want to use and it's a, it is a, a, it's an interesting idea that, that I go along with of using the whole site to kind of do that. So now with the parking, have you looked at all of the apartments and all of the parking in the same fashion to come up and say that we really do have extra parking there?
So in this campus that we're talking about?
Right, the campus, right.
ATC only. We're not talking about any R20 lots that Stephen owns.
Yep.
We have required is 191 spaces and that's based on, spread between five parking, parking lots. And we required 191 and we have 219. So in all of our lots, we're over capacity in terms of, terms of what we park. And the majority of that is within the 25 Van Wagner, 35 Van Wagner Place Lot, which is in between the 44 Springside that has a large parking area.
Yep.
19, okay. Is that, so we figure out the parking?
So it's 20 something additional above code.
The other, the other real interesting part of the science of parking is that some of our users are daytime users and then you have the residential users. So there's different sequences of when the lots are busy or, or not. If you went by the lots tonight, you'd see that where Hilltop and Center House is that that lot is probably 75% full because we built more spaces than we ended up needing. But the lots across the street where the community foundation is, where our old office was, would be empty tonight, you know, so.
That's a daytime use more.
Yeah, so there's, there's really nice sequencing here. But I think the other thing that, that Andy and Ken were talking about before is we have the ability to build other. I'd be shooting myself in the foot to not know that if for something changed in the world and you needed more parking, then we have the ability on our site to, to build those spaces.
Okay.
All right.
Your units are all market rate units?
Yes, they are.
Okay, you haven't considered any affordable housing in this complex?
For this complex, no.
Well, I mean, for this new project, check that. I want to, because the other stuff has, has been approved already.
Yeah, we, we've begun a discussion with the county on this next project that we're bringing to look at some affordable on that and, which is on the corner of sites and Arlington Avenue, which, you know, you'll see in front of us if the, if, if we get the rezone from the town board.
Okay, okay. All right, that's it from me.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rocco. Ben?
I just, I just think they're making good progress and I like this, I like what I hear. You know, Andy has a lot of things on his plate with this, but I don't really have a problem with any of them.
Great, thanks, Ben. Peter?
I, I think you've done a, a great job with the design, landscaping, pedestrian access to the real plus. The, the only concern, or concern that I have is when you look at the utility plan and you see that 36 inch pipe underneath the building. I am sure that our engineer will get together with your engineer to come up with some kind of alternative. But a question I have about that pipe, what is it, what's the construction? Is it, is it ductile? Is it, is it masonry? What's the construction of that?
I don't know off the top of my head. No, it's HDP, plastic pipe, corrugated plastic pipe.
Do you know what the load bearing is? What the load bearing capacity is on that pipe?
So essentially the pipe would be placed in a normal manner, as if it was buried under dirt. The proximity of it, where the foundation and footings go, the structural engineer would design, we typically do smaller pipes where we go penetrations through the footings and under the footings and we arch and we design the footing to go around it to spread the load around the pipe. So in this case, that what would have be happening was the structural engineer, when they design the footings, would design it such that the weight of the building, anything above it, would not be impacting the pipe.
So it would be dispersed?
It'd be dispersed around it as if the pipe didn't exist.
Okay, you would be taking a look at that?
Yeah.
I would.
If you ever need to go.
If, 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 if we find that there's no other way and we have to go that route, yes.
Maybe one other point on that is on Mr. Dennis's backend of his property, he has a catch basin there that was constructed to take care of whatever that problem was 25 years ago. So this system ends up into that basin that was designed to handle.
And it's worked, I guess, the last 25 years. Like I say, I was on the town board 25 years ago and, you know, the science then is not what the science is today. So I think it would be wise for us to actually double check it and make sure that we're safe and you're safe for your benefit as well. Thank you.
Thanks, Peter. And my comments, let's see, I, I had comments on the sidewalk connections and the crosswalk on Springside. It looks like that picture you showed there had those already in place, so that was great. Landscape screening to the houses was always a concern. It sounds like the neighbors are on board with what you're proposing here. I do notice that, you know, there's a lot of trees to the other community, but they're, but they're all deciduous, so you know, we take a look at that. I could see right through there today, you know. Last time I drove through there to.
Towards Arlington Heights.
I can even see a house up there.
We can look at that.
I don't know which, where exactly that comes out, but if there's anything further to, to put some non-desiduous screening there.
We.
Behind your house.
If I could add something on that, because we had a meeting with Jim Pulver who lives in maybe the closest home at Arlington Heights. He's on the board there as well. So he was part of the committee that met with us. He was, he asked us the question about elevation differences and we can bring that to the next meeting. But what's interesting about that is, is that those, there's, there's a substantial rise in the property. So that even at the uppermost fourth floor, which you'll see is that he's still higher up there. So our fourth floor, our utmost, our highest level at the fourth floor is about even with the Arlington Heights first floor.
Crown level or first floor, okay.
So it works every, but it's, it's, you know, Leifon, it's completely private, but it's a good point now.
This, this point in time of year, I can see both, see, see. This, this point in time of year, I can see both, see direct, both directions, I can see.
Correct, but having the opportunity to speak with Arlington Heights, and now we can perform the storm order management on their property, then that'll offer us a little bit more to provide some screening possibly, if we have to.
All right. Just something to consider there.
Yeah, the other nice thing about that is when we built the center house in Hilltop, we got permission from them to clean up some of the woods, because there's debris in there and, you know, that's accumulated, so we get to, you know, make it a little bit more attractive, you know, for our tenants, and they're fine with that.
Sounds good, too. And I like the idea of the pickleball court, that's getting very popular, so if you could incorporate that in. All right. That's it for tonight, so I moved at the planning board to determine that the application is incomplete, defer action on this application, and direct the applicant to respond in writing to comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies, including but not limited to the following items, one through thirteen, which includes comments from the planning board tonight.
Thank you very much.
Chairman seconded, call to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes four to zero. All right, thanks for.
For a February meeting, we can bring a full architectural presentation, materials and all the details.
Well, I mean, based on what fascists, you know, this is a new requirement here now. Enough of that computer stuff. You like that VR stuff, but there's nothing in every place to say.
Thanks for working with your neighbors, though. I mean, that's really very helpful, and it's thank you for coming out and providing the comments.
Yep, thank you.
And just for the neighbors, the public hearing, since it's adjourned here, it's being adjourned to February, there won't be another notice in the mail. If you want to just double-check, then just check the website before the next, before the February meeting to make sure that it's on, and it should be on, and if it needs to be rescheduled, it will be shown there.
Yep. And. Safe, safe trip home.
Thank you, you too.
I see. And happy holidays, and next up is, in adjournment for Eight Tucker Drive, I moved at the planning board to adjourn the public hearing to January nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes four to zero. This time I move to allow public comments on any other items on tonight's agenda.
Second.
Ask that you please limit the comments to no more than three minutes. Moved and seconded, called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes four to zero. So now's the time, if anyone else in the room or on the call has comments on any other items on tonight's agenda.
This is my question.
Yes, who's? Say your name and.
This is Michelle.
Michelle?
This is Michelle. The first thing I'd really like to say, everybody, I shouldn't go against my time, it really have to do with process. And then I'd be, you know, I'm very happy to make some comments on the Hudson Heritage item. On December fourteenth, the, not once, but, and not twice, but three times, the access phone number and meeting IDs were changed for the council of the whole meeting. And this, this absolutely, undeniably thwarted public participation and discouraged it. The timing of this error was kind of questionable because, such that after thirty people participated in the fifty-day school development hearing of December seventh, you know, this was another opportunity for the public to make comment yesterday, December fourteenth, and many didn't understand, and this is on top of all the issues with the access numbers changing, you know, close to the meeting time and into the meeting itself.
All right, okay. I'm with Michelle.
There's no, wait, the town supervisor said there's no public hearing tonight, so newbies in the process didn't understand that that would not preclude members of the public to comment on the project towards the end of the meeting. So I really, I have to say this, I was shocked at what occurred with all of the number and the access codes changing close to the meeting time. So on the Hudson Heritage project, you know, I'm electromagnetically sensitive, and as much as thirty percent of the population is, but they may not be aware of it, so I'm looking at wireless proliferation in our town. So this Hudson Heritage project has a forty-foot antenna in the parking, in the ShopRite parking lot, and, you know, this telecom code update, which was promised by kind of the end of this past summer, hasn't happened. Instead, we have hired, as I understand, Cityscape consultants, a Florida-based firm with no New York experience at all. Nassau County, yes, but Nassau County and Florida. So they were hired without, you know, a bidding process, no other bids were entertained, and these experts are, these Cityscape consultants are experts in stealth and revenue generation, not public safety. So please tell us here that you're not going to turn, and I know this is the planning board, tell us you're not going to be turning to them for our telecom code. I mean, they're lobbyists for the wireless industry. They shouldn't be involved in drafting our telecom code, so there's that. But in terms of the planning board, you know, this forty-foot antenna in the ShopRite parking lot is under two hundred feet, so it's forty feet, so that doesn't have to be licensed by district or monitor.
Cam and Michelle, that's.
And the telecoms know that. And, you know, the FCC never monitors its emissions, and they, you know, they say they aren't funded to do it, so at Hudson Heritage, the potential of hazard substances, you know, aren't going to be properly monitored without a telecom code update.
Okay, wait. Michelle, we, I have to, sorry, I have to start cutting off tonight, because we, we were worried about the weather, and you've, you know, if you could, if you could quickly finish up.
Okay, all right, I'm going to do my best. This forty-foot tower is in compliance with the OET bulletin sixty-five, but the public needs to know that it only talks about thirty minutes of loitering periods for this category of antenna, so we have to have signage for shoppers and employees, you know, alerting them of the potential hazards, okay? And these towers are not monitored for compliance at all. So I won't be shopping there, you know, without a telecom code update. I really, I can't, and, you know, you guys are entering into this joint venture partnership, which I've mentioned before, you know, you have an umbrella entity, the shield to town, but the umbrella company has no board directors or assets. You know, so that will leave claimants, you know, work, people working there and shopping there within thirty to one thousand feet from the antenna. In Nowheresville, you know, if they do end up with, you know, heart attacks, strokes, or whatever, in that parking lot, which is, you know, typical of people who are sensitive to high levels.
Okay.
And again, we don't know what's going to be coming out of that antenna.
Okay.
Because it's not, these are not monitored.
Thanks, Michelle, we understand your concerns, and, you know, we don't have an application, there's no application tonight for a telecom antenna, so if there was a previous application, but we'll take those comments under advisement for the future. And will, anyone else wish to comment on any other items on tonight's agenda? Seeing none, I move we resume the meeting.
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes four to zero. Next up is Hudson Heritage subdivision.
Good evening. Can you hear me, members of the board?
Yep.
Great. My name is Joe Ariel, I'm a partner at Del Bell, Dylan Weimark, Wise, and Weider, attorneys for the applicant owner. The owner of the property, as you know, is EFG Saber Heritage SC LLC, and we're before you tonight to commence review of a simple subdivision of certain previously approved lots in this development. As you know, the project is within the HRDD zoning district and is subject to a development master plan approved by the town board. The proposed subdivision, just to be clear, will not modify the uses of the lots, but only allows us to negotiate with the end users that, you know, both the town and the applicant are, you know, excited to bring into the site and begin to not only occupy those lots, but help fund the further development of some of the more exciting parts of the site that will be coming down the line. So I just want to make clear that it's, it's not changing end uses, it's just drawing some lines on, for, so that we can kind of trade in these lots with the end users.
Yep.
We'll be submitting a petition to the town board for concurrent development master plan consistency review and certain other relief under the town board's jurisdiction. We expect the town board to continue as lead agency under secret. Kyle Ahern of Chasen is here tonight to briefly describe the action to you. We have received comments from your consultants, we look forward to responding to them in full in our next submission, and are hopeful that we'll see you in January. And I know people are concerned about the weather, so I'm going to wrap it up there and let Kyle describe this to you and/or answer any questions that you got.
All right, thanks, Joe.
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to share my screen here, just quickly go through this. Okay. You guys see the subdivision plan?
Yep, we've got it now.
Okay, so you'll recall, this is the town center area of Hudson Heritage, you see Winslegate Road, the main road into the site along here, and ShopRite in the back is four A, just to get your bearings a little bit. As you come in the site, you have Chipotle Starbucks here, you have at three A, you have Burger King at four B, you have CVS currently under construction at three B, Smoothie King opening in the next month or so at what is proposed lot four C. And you'll also recall, the last meeting, the last time you were before the board, we were discussing amended site plan approval for some field changes that occurred over time, that also included some rail trail changes based on coordination with the county. Three D, which is building I, was revised, and there was some changes there related to the drive-through that were coordinated with the town and the county planning department, and that also included the subdivision of lot seventeen for the landfill. Since that time, as Joe mentioned, there's essentially the need to further subdivide what was previously lots three, four, and five in order to finance future, the phase two project essentially, and also, you know, some of the other parts of phase one. So to that end, as Joe said, also said, there's no physical changes to the plan, there are no change in use, you know, there's really, if you go out to the site after everything's been constructed, you'll have no, you know, there'll be no actual change above ground. And as I mentioned in our cover letter, the only actual change to the plan itself is related to a couple utility pipes. So let me just change this real quick, there you go. So same plan, a little more colorful, some things highlighted here, just want to quickly mention. Lot five A, building J here, currently, this is lot five, and there's a water line that is shared between the two buildings. Once you subdivide that lot, you can no longer share the water service main between two separate tax parcels unless you set up a transportation corporation, which we are proposing at lots three and four, and I'll come back to that. But basically, where we don't need to do that, the plan is to make a couple tweaks specifically for areas that haven't been constructed yet, such as lot five, and just avoid a transportation corporation, it's just easier, cleaner, less of an ongoing maintenance and operational, you know, need. And that also applies to, this is not in my cover letter, but as we were going through the town board, upcoming town board submission, a couple sewer lines were also identified as moving to avoid the need for transportation corporation, so I wanted to make sure I mentioned those. Building J sewer line currently comes out to the ShopRite Northern Access Drive here. That line here is shared with the other lot five building, so that, similar to the water line, will be split out, it'll come directly out to Winslegate Road, and that will get rid of the need for the transportation corporation there. Same thing with building F here, currently comes out to this sewer line, which actually comes down from ShopRite, so same thing, that will just tie directly into Winslegate Road, and actually, it already does, and the grease trap is being moved to the south side anyway, so that one is being handled already, separate from the subdivision. Building I currently ties into a sewer line with building K, so that will be subdivided, and same thing, instead of tying into this manhole, we'll just tie into this manhole here. So very minor, those will be submitted to the Department of Health for their permission to file the subdivision. We did receive a letter, comment letter, from the Department of Health, and not surprisingly, they were also focused on the transportation corporation and how water services are handled, so we will be coordinating with the town water department and the health department to work through those responses. So back to three and four, lots three and four, the reason for the transportation corporation is essentially because you will have shared water lines, so the town owns, or, oh yes, it does, currently own the Winslegate Water Main, and then on each individual parcel, so on each side of Winslegate Road, you have water meter pits, and then the water service line's going to each building. Those are privately owned, so they're not owned by the town, and they're currently on an individual tax parcel, even though there's multiple buildings, it's just one lot, so it's a private line, and you don't need a transportation corporation when it's one lot. So once we subdivide it, you then have a private line with multiple lots, multiple individual tax parcels that are being served by that line, so it's, you know, state requirements that that line is then maintained, owned and maintained and operated by a responsible party, and in this case, that will be, instead of asking the town to take ownership of that line, the plan is to, the proposal is to set up a transportation corporation, which then is responsible for maintaining that line, you know, for keeping service going for that line, et cetera. Same, same exact, basically just a mirror on lot three, so you have another, water line will be split into multiple lots, so the same requirement for a transportation corporation. And really, that, that's, that's about it, you know, it's engineering-wise, the water was the biggest kind of consideration, so we met with the water department, they have, they have no concerns, they'll essentially continue to operate exactly as they currently do, which is to the meter pit, and everything else after that will be up to the transportation corporation. But, yeah, if anyone has any questions, happy to answer them.
Hey, thanks, Kyle. Eric?
Sure. So this, the application for the major subdivision will, of section one of the previously filed subdivision, will also, will require secret and development master plan consistency review in addition to the subdivision application. A threshold issue for the planning board, however, is that one of the lots in the proposed subdivision would be an open development area.
Yep.
Which would require action by the town board, and as Mr. Ariel suggested, they will be making an application to the town board for that. The board really can't take any action until, until that lot is approved, because that's a function of the town board's jurisdiction, not the planning board's. The transportation corporations similarly is an action of the town board, less of a threshold issue, the planning board has done, has approved things with transportation courts being conditions of approval, but it's, it's all at the town board first. So the recommendations for tonight have to do with, just in recommending that EFG Saber Heritage submit an application to the town board to get that process started, and also to then, also to provide advice if you want to at this point in time, in anticipation of the town board making a required referral to the planning board with regard to that open development area, the planning board, if you feel like you have an opinion now, you could make that to the town board in advance, or you could wait until the referral occurred. It would be a little more efficient to do it now, but that's your choice.
That's, yeah, lot five B.
Combine the town board, if it continues as lead agency, you can save them the trouble and indicate your consent to that now. And then, then the action would be to defer until they come back with some additional information, because you may initiate the review of the subdivision.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you, Eric. It's mostly lines on the paper, except for what Kyle described, moving the pipes around for avoiding some transportation corpse, anything.
Yeah, I do have some questions about some of those lines that are being proposed to avoid a transportation corporation, but I don't, we don't have to go into those details right now. We can talk about, Kyle and I can work that out offline.
Okay. Sounds good. Let's, yeah, we have to decide if we, you know, how we feel about recommending to the town board about the open development area, lot five. It's, so it's not in any town road footage. And it's just over there. They, I think they're proposing an easement to across the Shopright parcel to reach that other parcel 5B. So let me know how you feel about that and we'll make a recommendation. Start with Peter.
As long as our engineer is on top of the transportation corps, how they're distributed, how many really you think are required or not required, that's fine. Also, are we going to get surveys of each of these lots? Will they be submitted to the, to the town?
Subdivision, a subdivision plat requirement is to show the meets and bounds of all of the new lots.
Yeah, meets and bounds. So we'll, they'll provide that to us.
Yep.
All right, anything else? Ben?
Hope as long as, like Peter said, as long as Andy's on it, I'm not worried about it.
Yep.
Seems okay, favorable?
And Rocco?
Not on this particular thing, because I think it's been covered by all of the members. But I, I do have a question about the buildings that have already been completed on lot 4C, I believe. Well, when I'm in the Shopright parking lot, I can still clearly see all the utilities on top of the buildings. Now, you may not be completed with the screening, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, it's a good question.
I mean, it, it kind of falls into this. Kyle, do you have any question, I mean, any comments on that?
I know the, there's been notes COs issued for those buildings in 4C yet. I'm not sure if, if they still have screening to go. I can, I can certainly ask the architect where they're at with, with construction, specifically on the rooftop areas. And we can, we can circle back on that.
Because I know, I know on the original architectural drawings, they were well screened. They're not well screened. I mean, you can see them, there is, there is like a higher area along the roof that goes along in the perimeter of the building, but it's certainly not high enough to, to screen all those utilities up there.
Okay, and I know, remember, they talked about some ground based utilities too, I thought.
Right, well, those, I wasn't even looking. I just happened to be there the other day and, and I was looking across because that parking lot's a little higher and you can look across and you can basically see all the utilities up there.
Okay. Just to clarify, I talked about some of the underground piping changes related to this application. Just to be clear, there's no, we're not requesting any changes to architecture or any rooftop utilities or anything like that.
Right, I know, but you mentioned that, I know Smoothie King is going to be looking to open in January, is my understanding. So it would be good to get on that now, so we don't have an issue.
I wasn't sure which building exactly, but it's one of those starting on the right hand side on 4C that you could literally see. There were two or three buildings there that were, at least the shell was up and the exterior seemed to be complete. Now, I don't know if they are totally complete or not, that's why I was asking.
All right, something to take a look at.
Yeah, that's it for me, thank you.
All right.
But I like the way it's coming along, actually.
Yeah, in general, it's, it's good to see the progress.
Yep.
Yeah, I've got nothing further at this point. These are mainly for financial reasons, carving these lines up, as we've done with Eastdale as well. So I just ask, I just want to make sure. Initially, the question that was going around the table was whether the 280A seemed appropriate. What I thought I heard was that people said subject to engineering comments. You didn't have a problem with it, am I right about that? I just want to know what the outcome was on that.
I think that was about the transportation corporation.
Yes, yeah, it wasn't about. Right, well, that's why I wanted to, so, I don't know, did people, did people chime in on the 280A?
I don't think anyone had an issue with it, right?
No. Yeah, so, okay.
Yeah, and my only, my only comment is, is going to be related to which lots, you know, if all the lots, which lots need to be included in the, in the transportation corporation, based on some of the changes that Kyle's proposing to avoid them. So I just want to make sure we're good, but otherwise, I don't see an issue with it.
Yeah, and as far as the open development area, I don't think we, you know, we have an issue with on the way. The other, the town board has to decide on that.
Just getting back to Rocco's comment, who's, who's signing off on the landscaping? Is it the building department?
Well, no, it's for any permit or later for a CO. When, when, before the building department issues those things, it circulates, they circulate to all of the departments to make sure, and we all go out and check our particular things. So we will be looking at it, yeah.
Thanks.
All right. Okay, I guess that's it. So I move that the planning board recommend that EFG Saber Heritage SCLLC submit to the town board an application for a proposed open development area and for the transportation corporation approvals.
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question, all is in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes four to zero. I move that the planning board advise the town board that is, that it has, that it has no opinion on the proposed creation of an open develop area for lot 5B as proposed by the final plat Hudson Heritage Major Subdivision Section One, and that the planning board consents to the town board in continuing as secret lead agency for a coordinated environmental review of the amended Hudson Heritage project.
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question, all is in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes four to zero. And I move that the planning board defer further action on this subdivision application pending an application to the town board as secret lead agency and for approval of the proposed open development area and transportation corporation approvals and subject to the following items one through 10, which includes comments of tonight's meeting.
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question, all is in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes four to zero.
So, so Kyle, if you could send me a copy of that map that you were showing on the screen with the piping changes, I can take a look at it and we can talk it over.
Correct, that's most likely going to be an exhibit in the petition that we'll be submitting to the town board. Do you want a copy of that, of that submission or just that plan?
You can send me the whole petition, that's fine.
Good. Thank you, everybody, be safe. Have a good holiday, guys. Take care. All right, next up is 134 Innis Avenue. Who's on representing them?
Gary, from C3 Consultants.
Hi, Gary.
How you doing?
Good, you.
So, you know, I'm.
Do you want to share your screen and do a proposal or just talk about it?
Yeah, I don't have anything to share. I left early because of the weather.
Ah, okay.
So, and we're not that far along, we have not answered any of the comments yet. So I'll just give you a brief description.
Yeah, we have the plans in front of us, just, you know, so.
Okay. All right, so we're proposing two small additions to an existing one story convenience store with a full kitchen. The south end of the building, as I just found out recently, the whole building is going to be maintained and occupied by the same tenant as the convenience store. The south end will become a liquor store.
Yep.
And the fourth end will become a hair salon. And that's about all the information I have right now. They're both one stories, which matches the existing one story convenience store that's been there since the late seventies, early eighties. It was originally built as a 7-Eleven.
All right. Yeah, we're familiar with the, the site. Let me go to our, to Mike for comments, this was on Kristen's.
Yep, okay, let me do, I'll do my best. So this is the first time that the board has seen this application. As, as Gary mentioned, there, you know, there are a number of comments and questions that, that staff has. And I'm sure that they will address those in a subsequent submission. You know, in terms of the site plan, there are a lot of details that need to be added. Kristen did, you know, provide a bunch of information about that in her, in her notes. You know, I think the most significant of the concerns is probably the, related to the parking, the layout in particular, the, you know, the spaces up close to Innis Avenue that are parallel spaces are a little bit awkward, especially the one that's furthest to the south. It's really not a good way probably to get in there. But, you know, they may be useful for employees or owners of the, of the project. So, you know, I think there's opportunity for them to work with that. There will be some variances that are going to be required here as well. And so for tonight, we're really just suggesting that the planning board declare its intent to be lead agency and to defer action on the application and ask them to respond to comments.
All right. Sounds like a plan.
Andy.
Let me go to, yep.
Yeah, so Mike said, we have, we have a number of comments. Looking for, you know, kind of some of our standard, more standard drawings, including turning movements, photometrics, and some additional information on the existing service connections. And then the, one of the more significant comments has to do with grease trap. We understand that there's an internal grease trap to the existing building. The town is, does not, does not allow internal grease traps. We prefer to see external grease traps, so that'll be a change that we'll need to see on the plans.
All right. Thanks, Andy. Let's go around the board for comments on it as well. Ben, do you have anything?
No.
Peter?
At this point, we're making sausage, so it's, it's way too early.
Bit early. Rocco?
Yeah, I think it's still a bit early.
Right, I mean, my comments is, you know, the county's working on sidewalks along Innis Avenue, so it'd be good to have a connection to that sidewalk, a pedestrian connection to that sidewalk as well. If you can work that, tie, work with them and tie that in. And architecture looks good to me. I think the hip roof design is good. You might want to consider, you know, any EV, EV charging station as part of the parking if you want. The town has a new code that was passed that gives you guidance on that. And the parallel parking, yeah, I mean, right now, parking's not parallel. It is, is, but is maybe the aisle, driveway is not sufficient to keep it that way. I don't know what the, why they're working on to make it parallel. So if it has to be parallel there, that last, that last spot that's kind of hemmed in, maybe that's something to designate for motorcycle parking or something. So that's extended my comments tonight, and you have all the other rest of the comments from Kristen's letter. So I move that the planning board declare its intent to be lead agency to coordinate the environmental review of the proposed project as an unlisted action and authorize the planning department circulation of notice of intent dated December 15, 2022, a copy of the EAF and a copy of the application to the identified interested and involved agencies.
Second.
Moved and seconded for secret, called to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes four to zero. And I move that the planning board defer further action on this application and direct the applicant to respond to the comments in writing of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies, including but not limited to the following items one through 11.
Yeah, well, you have to change 11, it's not the city.
Number 11 is, is town. So it is.
It is.
Oh, it is the city of Pecos? Because part of it, it's on the borderline, okay. All right. I was going to ask about that, okay.
And I would add, and I would add 12, any comments from the town, the planning department tonight, such as the sidewalk connection.
Yep.
All right, moved and seconded, called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes four to zero. Okay? Very good, good luck, and we'll see you next time.
All right.
Okay, next up, Eastdale, a couple of go, hold on. Paperwork. All right, we've got a couple of extensions here. So Eastdale Village Lot Line Revision of Lots 12W in Lands of Agro. I move that the planning board grant a 90 day time extension of conditional lot line revision approval from January 12, 2023 forward to April 12, 2023.
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes four to zero. Next up is Eastdale Vision, Eastdale Village subdivision of Lot 2E. Along with the 20th site plan amendment, I move that the planning board grant a 90 day time extension of conditional subdivision approval from January 17, 2023 forward to April 17, 2023.
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes four to zero. Last.
Thank you all, enjoy the holidays.
You too.
Thanks, Jeff. And C5 is Verizon Store Additional Retail Expansion. I move that the planning board grant 190 day time extension of conditional site plan approval from December 22, 2022 forward to March 22, 2023 and advise the applicant that obtaining the site plan signature and a building permit are necessary to preserve the site plan approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes four to zero. Okay, next up, we have a have an issue with, what's the address here?
18 Creek Road.
18 Creek Road. You want to talk about that, Mike?
Yeah, well, I believe Mr. Bryant is on and perhaps his attorney. Yep, I see Mr. McGee there. So they can describe that this is, basically they're requesting a waiver of site plan review under section 210150E and which would allow the planning board to, again, waive site plan review with those specific requirements in the code.
Something that doesn't come up very often, so I just wanted to get your take there. All right, go ahead, guys.
Thank you, the board member is Dean McGee. I'm McCabe Coleman Ventosen Ederson. My client is here virtually, the applicant Scott Bryant. He's joining us remotely, although he didn't want to be there in person this evening. We come for the board seeking approval for a site plan waiver pursuant to section 210150E of the code for 18 Creek Road. The property has historically recently been used as a storage facility housing multiple contractors who store equipment in the building. Also, a current tenant is the Arlington Fire Department. The town building department has been aware of this usage for at least the past 10 years and perhaps longer. Just to provide some context, my client is the owner of the adjacent property at 16 Creek Road. He purchased this property in May of 2022. He purchased that property in May of 2022. It's been developed into multiple retail storage buildings, which have already received approval from the town. The 18 Creek Road building is suitable for a contractor's storage yard because that's how it's been used for many years at this point. And all of these properties are zoned IH for heavy industry. Just as some background, before the applicant purchased the property, he conducted as due diligence, including a municipal search with the town building department. So he requested whether there were any municipal violations against this property. His title insurance company and my client were assured in writing from the building department that there were no municipal violations. So acting upon that assurance that the property was being properly used, there were no municipal violations, they went forward and they purchased the property. On the day of closing, however, my client received a violation notice that informed him for the first time that the use of the building violated the town code, I believe due to the lack of site plan approval. The applicant came to learn that there had been prior violation notices that were never provided to him during the municipal search process. So as temporary relief, the town permitted him to continue the occupancy of two of the four tenants, including the Arlington Fire Department, my firm filed a notice of claim to seek redress for the failure to identify the prior violations during the municipal search, but we're hopeful that this application can be approved and resolve those issues. So essentially. So essentially, the property has been used, as previously stated, as storage units for multiple tenants. That's a permitted use in this zoning district. That's how it was being used when my client bought it. He's not intending to make any changes to that, and he wants to avail himself of the relief that's allowed in the code under Section 210-150E. All of the conditions of those provisions are met here. There are subdivisions, there are subsections in the law. For example, the proposed change in use will not result in any additional traffic generation. Well, that's true because he's not changing how it's been used. So I'm happy to walk you through each of those, but I also know it's a late night and I know the weather's not good, so, you know, I'm here to answer questions, as is Mr. Bryant, to the extent you have any.
Okay, thanks. I think our main concern is if he's touching anything on the exterior from that point of view.
And I'll certainly let Mr. Bryant answer, but it's the intent that the use just continued that was previously.
All right.
Previously allowed to continue.
All right, let's, any comments, Andy, from your standpoint?
No, not from me.
The only thing I would just add is that the last CO for this property, according to the building department, was from 1990. I think it's 99, and it was for a manufacturing use, something grinding company. And it was for the entirety of the building. So at that time, the building was used by one entity. It had a CO. That is the last time that the spaces had a CO. So none of the five units that are there now were ever approved or reviewed by the building department, and I just want you to be aware of that as well.
Okay, so that's a concern if they're covered safely or whatever. Lisa, do you have comments on this?
I would just also add that the applicant is working with the building department to satisfy the building. There are some building issues and violations, and those are, my understanding is that he's been working with the building inspector to get those rectified, which sort of runs independent of what's before this board tonight. The only thing that the board is being asked to consider is whether the use of this property or five contractors' storage units would be, would require site plan, a new site plan approval.
Okay. Yeah, I'm sure they need smoke detectors and whatnot and things like that, so. All right, thanks, Lisa. Go around for comments. Peter?
My only question is, maybe the town attorney can respond to this. Was it the building department that issued the violation, lack of site plan approval? And is that substantive?
Well, yeah, go ahead, Lisa.
I'm actually not sure who issued. My suspicion is if, I don't know, and maybe Dean can answer this, or maybe Scott can, I don't know if it was actually a violation notice for the change, the fact that it's not a permitted use, but I think it was a statement from the town that the current use doesn't have a current site plan and therefore is not, you know, the last site plan we had was the 1999 site plan.
There was also work being done on the building without any building permits, and I think that's what.
We could ask Mr. Bryant's attorney. You mentioned that there was a violation issued for lack, you know, what department issued that violation?
So Ms. Cobb articulated, well, it's my understanding there was a, first, that Mr. Bryant is working with the town building department and the building inspector to resolve any concerns the building the inspector might have, but that he also did receive notice that there was no site plan approval, which is why we're here today. And certainly, if Mr. Bryant has anything to add, he's been intimately involved with this process as well.
I, you know, when I read the ordinance, I don't really find a real stumbling block here. My only concern is that we, that the planning board comes in a conflict with another town entity that has issued a violation.
So I don't believe it's an actual violation. I think it was a statement that there's no approved site plan, and the action before this board would rectify that by, if you were inclined to grant the waiver, that would be a statement from the town, your board is the authority to say whether one is required or what conditions you want on, anything like that. So that would rectify this outstanding violation. I would, I don't view it as a conflict. I view it as solving the.
It's definitely not a conflict. I think the issue, though, and the relationship between the two is, when the work was being done without building permits, it was noted that those would be necessary. Depending on what the uses are in the building and whether those uses have changed, there may or may not also be a site plan. We did not, you know, we were not aware of what the uses were going to be. And so that's part of what we've now, we have information now about what the spaces are going to be used for. And, you know, if the planning board says that no site plan is needed, then the building department can go ahead and issue building permits and eventually COs when the building code is met. But they won't do that if there's an outstanding question about whether a site plan is needed or not. So they do need to know from us whether we have a site plan.
If we couldn't waive it or not, I mean, Ben, do you have any comments?
This is new territory for me.
Yep.
Have we ever, we have a week.
I can't remember that we've ever done in my knowledge, but I've only been on the board.
Besides, the building, was there any, anything else done with the property? They're just talking about building here, too.
There has been some work on the property that's been observed, not, but it's my understanding that the request currently is to do nothing on the outside of the building, which would then require a site plan. And we might want to limit and be clear that there is a, the internal work maybe is okay, if that's how the board feels, but make it, spell it out very clearly that if you're making improvements to the property, the outside of the property, any expansion of the building, any of those things would obviously require a site plan.
Yep. Yes, you know, I always say, the most faded ink is clearer than the sharpest memory.
Right.
So I think if we're gonna move forward, I'd like to see something in writing that clearly spells out exactly what we're doing, since we're going to be establishing a precedent. As far as I know, this has never occurred before.
Yeah, I was gonna recommend that we have Lisa and, you know, our town, our attorney and the planning department staff work together on some wording that we could then pass the next time in. Rocco?
Yeah, I've got a question, since this is new ground and we're gonna be issuing a waiver, and I'm, Peter, words matter here. So Mr. Bryant's attorney keeps stating that it is Mr. Bryant's intent to continue to use this building for contractor equipment, storage, contractor yards, et cetera. Would it be to, would it be wise to clearly state, and why wasn't the word commitment in there instead of intent? Because intent seems pretty flexible. Commitment is more direct and more specific. I don't know, am I?
Yeah, I mean, that's why I think we want to get some wording that, you know, if they, if things change going forward.
Right, if things change, then there should be a site plan.
Right, exactly.
So, Mr. Bryant, are you on? Scott?
We can't hear you if you, we see your name on the.
Can we see him? And it looks like he's not muted.
It's not muted, but we don't, can't hear him at the moment.
So, and Scott, just wanted to give Scott one more chance to weigh in, and I'm happy to, honestly, if he's not there.
There is a phone?
All right, so, yeah, to be, so just to respond to two of the issues, right, one is, I didn't mean to be vague in my language, it is, it is the, it is a commitment, certainly. You know, it is, it is what he would continue to use the property for, period. And, you know, in terms of setting a precedent, I would just put forth that, you know, we view the precedent really as the very limited circumstances laid out in the law in Section 210-150E, which are focused on the lack of changes, you know, the changes in the waiver of site plan not affecting specific items like traffic generation, wastewater, deasterium and rapid circulation. All of that is true here.
Yeah, I understand. I mean, continued this use is very, you know, it has minor, minimal traffic as it exists and will not increase with this. So I'm not opposed to the waiver, but I think we want to get the language straight.
Yeah, I think language is very important and the fact that it is in writing, as Peter says, and reviewed by the town attorney and the planning board and the director, et cetera, who have a lot more experience at this.
So I would recommend that, yeah, the attorney and the department come up with some language that, that if any, if any things change, that we need to address, you know, if you're doing something externally, taking down more, you know, more trees or making more storage area, whatever, that externally, that we need to come back with a site plan and look at it.
Let's also be mindful that this is called Creek Road for a reason. And we've already had, we've had an environmental consultant advise us that we should have some language in there that addresses the fact that it is in a sensitive area and that the work will be confined to the interior of the building.
Yes, sensitive because of the creek, but there's also concerns if you start digging up things that was old manufacturing, it was the dairy, old manufacturing, there might be contamination. That's okay if it lets, if it just sits there, but that would be another case for looking at site plan.
Let's leave the dogs alive.
And one other concern I had was what's going on with the school buses next door. I mean, they drive over this parcel currently to get access to their things. Is there an easement in place now, or if there's not, then?
I don't know if they've had any, if Mr. Bryant has had any conversations with the owners of the parcel next door about that access, or if there is an easement in place, but something to.
I don't know if you're aware of any easement across that property for the bus?
I can't answer that question other than that no issues have been raised to me that, no concerns have been raised to me regarding that issue.
Okay, because if, you know, things change going forward, certainly, then, you know, an easement might be something good to look into, to make sure that that's in writing.
On form.
All right.
So we'll postpone or defer until January?
Yep, so we defer until January 16, I think it is, 2023.
Second?
With the, hold on, with the condition that the town, our attorney and the town staff, the planning staff, come up with some language to protect us going forward. All right.
All right, second.
Moved in second, called to question. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes four to zero. All right, we'll see you next month. Let's get that date right, January 16. All right. Time here. Next up is a presentation by Bassett College on their new admissions and career development project. So we welcome them to come down and uncover their model. Even includes the trees. I thought that was some new type of architecture.
So we were wondering if you'd like to come down, just stretch your legs a little bit, and we can do a brief introduction here with the model and then move to the slides? Or?
That might be. Well, yeah, the only concern I have is that the camera isn't gonna be able to get the model with us all standing around it, but maybe we can, maybe do a little presentation first and then we can.
You can look at the model at the end.
Yeah, we'll look at the model at the end.
Can we let this and put it into this corner here?
You're welcome to try. You got a lot of people, so maybe. Yeah?
Is that better?
Yeah.
That's great. No, no, it's fine. I'm good.
I was a big help with that. All right. So, you know, thank you, is everybody there? Thank you, Chairman Whitehead. I guess he's, should we wait till?
Just sit there for a second.
Okay, we'll wait a sec. Unless you want us to just get going. I know it's late. Okay, well, thanks to Chairman Whitehead, Mr. Welty, other members of the planning board and town planning department for meeting with us this evening. We know it's a long, long night and really appreciate the work that you do for the town, certainly after an agenda like that, to stay even longer means a lot to us, so thank you for that. As you know, I'm Mary Ann Begamon. I'm the dean of strategic planning and academic resources at the college. And with me this evening, we have Brian Corrigan, who's our project manager and also college architect. We have members of our design team, Matt Moffett and Marion Thompson from Marion Thompson Architects. We have Ken, who you know, of course, from LRC, our civil engineer, is David Kaminsky, who's helping us with approval processes and planning process. And also, we have, I don't know if they're online or not, but working with us, our Phil Greeley, traffic consultant, and Richard Cantor as a legal attorney. So that's the full team, and we really, again, appreciate the time that you're spending with us this evening. We're so excited by the progress that we've made on planning for our new admission and career education building and are really just thrilled to be able to share it with you and especially to get your thoughts, your comments, your questions and your concerns before we move further. So what you may probably remember, some of you hearing before, is that this project is going to relocate our admission and career education departments, which are currently in the center of campus, to the north edge of our campus. So on the image there on the slide, you can see some small white squares that show the current location of those departments in the center of campus. And then you can see a green sort of edge on the north side of campus, a green outline of our site plan for the new building. And so what this new building is going to allow us to do is to provide adequate space, obviously, for these two departments for admission and career education. And in many ways, it also provides us with a unique opportunity to convert what is currently a back face of the college into a front and welcoming face towards the Arlington Business District. So right now, you know, you're probably familiar with that edge of campus. There's a lot of parking. There's also the tennis courts, which really create a barrier to the town. What we're proposing to do with this new building is also, if you'll approve and if we get approvals from the town, extend Fairmont Avenue as a four-way stop there so that essentially we'll have a new entrance to campus that will align with Fairmont Avenue. The new building will then be situated close to that new entrance. What this allows us to do is to capitalize on the parking that's already in that location, although we'll expand and redesign that parking lot. And it also allows us to create a beautiful, nice, green, welcoming, open space at the corner of campus where the tennis courts will be removed. So we'll leave a few courts, but remove some of them from that location. So all in all, you know, this allows us, as I say, to create a new, to convert from what is a back door and a back kind of facing edge of campus, back of house services, to really a new front entrance to the campus and a new edge with the town, which we're really happy about, as I say. Admission and career education currently located in the center of campus are very difficult to find. You can see here in this image that the current admission building is there in the back. It's right behind Main. To enter campus and try to find that is a little bit of a mystery to many. When they do finally find it and they drop their student off to go in for their interview or whatever it is, then they have to go park their car in the north lot. Once they're done with that, they have to walk back. The parents are walking back, and by then the child is off at some info session somewhere, you know, and they hope to meet up later. So it's not a very welcoming and appropriate experience for our.
Yeah. Had to find it myself.
For our applicants. So creating this new building at the edge of campus that's easy to find, creating this new front entrance to the campus in some ways is really what we're after with this project. after with this project. And as I say, we're really excited by what it does, not only for us, for the college, but also obviously with our, in our relationship with the Arlington Business District. And so I think with that brief introduction, I am going to turn it over to Mary Ann, who's going to talk you through some of the rationale for the sighting and the design of the building. And then we have a short video that will fly you, hopefully not too quickly, around the building so you can get kind of a three-dimensional perspective of what...
Where's College View Avenue?
Sorry, College View is...
This is College View here. These are all the existing businesses and residences. That's the circle to right there. That's Raymond Avenue. I'm sorry, I should use that. It's louder next time. This is the new intersection.
So, hi everyone. It's really exciting to be here and we are actually really interested also in your feedback. So I don't know how big your screen is.
We have a very big screen right in front of us.
Very big?
Yeah, yeah. It's a secret.
You can magically see. Yeah, so College View is here on your screen. And the site that we're working with is here. It's the parking area. There's a lot of parking lots, dumpsters, there's a giant electrical facility here that is quite ugly, tennis courts. And the idea with, for the project that came to us from Vassar was to create a hinge condition between the town and the campus to kind of heal. It's kind of like a no man's land back there right now. It's definitely the back of house for the college. It's pretty ugly. And so I think for the students, there's not a clear path through, the tennis courts are in the way. And so the idea behind the project was really, you know, how can you use a building to create a stronger hinge? And here's the view of the town, which is of the Arlington Business District, which is so adorable. It's wood frame, two and three-story buildings that are very residential in feeling, but they have retail on the ground. And a lot of the retail's sort of boarded up. The hope is that this building would help provide a kind of public for that retail. And you can see the parking area. I'm going to do this quickly, so, since it's late. So the wood frame fabric of College View. There it is from above. We had a drone camera show all. Oh, I think an important thing about this past slide is the way that Fairmont comes and it just dead ends into a view of the parking area, which is really experientially very, not, you know, not a wonderful experience. It's, it makes, it makes it feel like there's kind of almost like a wall into the college, a parking wall. More views. And you can see the kind of detritus, you know, dumpsters, parking lots, very back of house. This is the feeling in that area. And the rest of the campus is so beautiful and it's such an art, you know, beautiful arboretum. And so it really feels like a disconnect.
Yep. We've already approved the move, you know, the changing of the varsity tennis courts.
Sorry, just had to mute somebody.
I was saying, we already had, you know, we already approved the moving of the varsity tennis courts.
I heard that. That's so exciting. Yeah, that's, he told me she was really, really happy. So here's the electrical facility that is just old and rusty and not a great front door to the campus. Dumpsters. So we also have spent some time just analyzing the context of Vassar and just really loving the way that there is a kind of dialogue between old buildings, new buildings. There's a kind of eclectic feeling to the campus that is parallel to and sort of supportive of the mission of the school, which has to do with supporting diversity, supporting individualistic ideas, multiple ideas, multiple statements about things. And so the fact that the architecture also does that is a kind of, I don't think it's an accident. I think that it's a, has been part of the precedent that Vassar has worked with all along. And this is a really beautiful quote, which I'll read because you probably can't see it. "Other campuses have often adopted an official repetitive college style, generally Georgian or Gothic. Vassar, in the college's determination to be always of its time, gave much more stylistic freedom to its architects, asking only that they produce their best. At Vassar, the landscape mediates and establishes the context for each building and its relationship to the next." So it's the continuation of this beautiful landscape, which is very arboretum-like, that gives, that is the character of the campus. And then the buildings are almost like individuals in dialogue with one another, which sort of, which actually represents the teaching methodology and the progressive qualities of the campus. There is a history of iconic, modern architecture that's really part of the canon of architectural thought. For instance, a Marcel Breuer Ferry House, which is so beautiful. And then you can see how it's nestled into an older fabric. And it works really well. It's like these different individuals in dialogue of each other. Chicago Hall, another really beautiful modernist building, but in the context of the older campus. And there it is, upper left corner, forming a courtyard. The Saranen, the Noise House by Saranen, who is one of our most important architects historically, which is close to the site. It's, the site is the upper right corner of the slide and the Saranen building down at the bottom. So we also looked at, so we looked at the character of the architecture, the identity of the architecture. We also looked at the quality of the landscape and how it's, how the formal qualities. So there's a kind of sequence of rectilinear courtyards that happen in the center. And then a much more Olmstedian landscape that runs along the edges that becomes more of a episodically linked series of courtyards. So really, the delight of Vassar is this kind of courtyard experience that are, that happen in series and unfold with the center ones being very platonic. And then as you move towards the edges, it's much more gardenesque and along the formality of an Olmsted. This is our diagram showing that kind of character of the edge. When we first started the project, this is something, this is a sketch that we got when we got the RFP. And Brian had done it. And it's, it became the generative idea of the project, which is the new admission center here as a formal structure that creates courtyard. And the north era is straight up, so it's kind of creating a sunny courtyard. We had, there was parking all along this edge. What we came back with and what we came and showed you guys, some of you guys, not the whole committee, we had a small committee meeting and we, and actually it was really helpful. And what you told us based on the scheme has transformed the scheme tremendously. But this is what we showed you. The idea of an L-shaped building that creates a courtyard. And then the yellow is the connective tissue, the connective courtyard, series of courtyards that lead to the brick gate at Juliet. And, you know, activate the town gown connection in a way that's very pleasant and beautiful. We had taken out that strip of parking and put a little lot, a parking lot here. And here's that horrible electric field. And we had not lined up the road with Fairmont. What you guys, some of the members of your committee who met with us said, you know, this is a nice idea to create that connection to the town, but we're turning, we're still turning our back on the town. And, you know, how to solve that with this game. So this had been the, the character of the building that we showed you that everyone seemed to like. So what we did, using this idea of the informal courtyards that line the edge, is we created a building that's made of three courtyards rather than just one here. And you can see them here. It's a, it's a building that is completely created by the exterior space that it's defining. And so we have created a really nice welcoming courtyard right on, right onto College View. There's the south-facing courtyard, which is addressing the campus. And then there's a courtyard, a kind of open arms quality to the building here that is addressing the parking area. So what ends up happening is you have, it's a very collegiate kind of expression to say, you have these open arms to the town and we're thinking Adirondack chairs. And it's a moment of stasis that starts to engage a kind of spontaneous encounter between the town and the college folks. So here it is as a close-up. We also are thinking that the path, the way the paths work is that they come, that there's a kind of nexus in the lobby. There's a hinge point in the lobby where all three of these courtyards come together. And the lobby has three doors and people can pass through. So there was a point in time where that was open air. And then we realized that doesn't work in this climate. And so we made it into, actually, we have a rendering of it. It's a really nice lobby where people can socially mix and the students would come, you know, through the lobby and it would be a very nice path to get to the town rather than going so back of house. So here is the actual floor plan with a red, with a black line around it. The parking is a little bit reconfigured with more spots. It's got a cherry ale that leads to this door. This parking lot we're thinking will serve the students who are coming to get interviews and tours of the campus as well, because it's admissions and development. So it's also going to be the people who are coming to interview students for jobs. So we're thinking that, you know, because we're bringing all this traffic here, that that will start to serve this, you know, the financial aspect of this group of, and also Fairmont. And you can see Fairmont is pulling through and connecting. So this is a really nice, it's becoming, it's kind of an up-and-coming retail district. And the admissions part of the building is here and then the development part is here. Here's the site plan showing, you know, how a student could come from the campus, come through. And then we're, we're thinking it might be fun. I mean, we wanted to talk to you guys about adding a crosswalk here so that you really, so there's a really a connection. And there is an existing crosswalk here, which could also be a way of getting into the town. But if we had one here, we'd activate this retail as well. And there's also a path that runs through this beautiful bosque of trees that goes to the gate. So close up with the Fairmont and its sidewalk. We're going to make a sidewalk here. And we're proposing to add a sidewalk along here as well, which is, the sidewalk right now stops right at kind of at the bus stop.
Yep.
So it becomes a new north gate. And here's the way that the vestibules, three vestibules that link inside this lobby and start to create a kind of way through unfolding. So we have a movie that is four minutes long, but it will just quickly show you some stills. This is the view from College View. The courtyard is here. That's addressing, that's the moment of stasis. When a tree is really big in the model, that means it's existing. So we're trying to keep as many existing trees as possible. And when it's like norm, more normal, you know, more new tree height, that means we're planting it. So there's a big investment actually in landscape. The arboretum quality of Vassar is being carried into this building. There's the courtyard with Adirondack chairs and places to sit and hang out, the view through to the campus here and the doors here, which take you through. Another view of courtyard. The building is kind, in the language of the, of the character of the College View retail, so wood frame, well, it, you know, a wooden building, which has the scale, we were looking at the scale of the retail and the buildings across the street. There's the street and then here's the courtyard. So we're trying to keep this scale harmonious. And then it rises up as you approach, as you, you know, as the building moves into the campus. And this is the big lecture hall with the tall ceilings. Here's the character of the lobby with the three entryways. There'll be couches, there'll be places to sit. It'll be really sunny because it has the south-facing windows with the overhang. And the students, the, who are very, we've heard are very scared who come to interview, would be here, you know, in this very sunny space. And then they go up the stairs to the interview rooms. So we have this movie, which starts on Fairmont. And the path does something like this. And, you know, you get to go over the building and it's really fun.
Sounds good.
So here's our existing view. And here's the planting plan, right at that same existing view, the bus stop, the new gate, the new north gate.
We're still, we're not seeing it.
We're still there at the, we're still the old view.
Do you need to share that?
Yeah, let me reshare it.
So we are thinking of creating a sign, signage at the new, new north gate. We'd keep the existing north gate, all that beautiful brickwork, but we would have a new sign where Fairmont comes in.
There we go.
There we go. So the quality of the vegetation, cherry ale, there's the signage for the...
We're not seeing it at the remote. I can see it in the meeting room video, but the screen is still showing the other.
Is it Lisa? Really? Okay. I don't know why.
I can see a small version of it. Someone could, we'll go.
All right. Well, you should have come in person, see? We talked about this.
Just a little scroll.
Full screen? Yeah, that'll do it.
Should we start over?
Let's start it over.
Yeah.
Is that different, Lisa?
Is that better?
Can you see it?
The main screen is still showing the, the view from Fairmont with my large screen. But I can see it for the meeting room camera is showing that video, so that's fine.
Okay.
We could. Should we hold the computer at the camera?
No, no, it's okay.
That's what I'm seeing.
I'm going to close everything else out.
Aren't you glad we left the best till last? It is a fun thing to see.
That's okay. I just, I pulled it immediately longer to, I'm probably one of the few, you know, it will probably show up, okay, on the video. But I'm still seeing the fly-through video start point and the view of Fairmont.
And we're walking along the front.
Well, why don't we, I think we should go through it because...
There we go.
Oh, good. Should we start over?
Yes. Others that we have are seeing it, so.
Yeah. Okay, so you can see the entry, the signage that we're thinking with, has a bench incorporated, the cherry ale that runs through the parking area, the building scale, two stories lifting up to the, towards the campus. The front porch, Adirondack chairs, the plantings, there's a big investment in plantings. We're thinking the building would be heat-treated oak, which is a way of not having to use rainforest wood and local, local wood from Pennsylvania. We're coming around to College View here. And you can see the courtyard that's addressing the town and creates this kind of courtyard for the town. Those, the round form is some of the HVAC equipment, which we might move if we can.
It's going to speed up soon, so hold on to your seatbelts.
We're going for a ride.
Put your seatbelts on.
Yeah, there we go. Down the sidewalk.
Across the street.
Across the street.
Up to the roundabout.
Through the gate.
Back in.
And then we have a path through the grove, which we're interested in your thoughts on that, if you like that idea, if you would rather us just have, use the sidewalk in order to activate the street. Coming back to the College View side of the building at the courtyard.
This is basically the same point you saw earlier from the other perspective, so going in, yep.
We wanted to focus on this because it's really the relationship to the town, which we got from you guys, made the building so much better. And now we're flying over. the south-facing elevation, which is the large grassy courtyard that addresses college, the two tennis, the two groups of tennis courts, we've taken out, but you guys know where they're going.
The public tennis courts remain, right? The, the smaller.
Yeah.
All right, yeah, that's nice.
Yeah. And we got a giant field that's for lots of things. There were a lot of student groups who really wanted the field, frisbee, ultimate, miming, things like that.
What did you do with the electric substation there?
I saw the screening as it went by, but.
Okay, so, so it's still there, you're not going to relocate that?
Can't do it.
They can't do much effort in that?
We're in the process of figuring that out.
Okay.
Yeah, we'd like to relocate them.
So, yeah, we're, we've been working with Central Hudson on a potential relocation. There's actually a partial station behind the building over here. So we're looking at trying to potentially increase that over there and work to landscape around it and move it into a different portion of the campus. It is the main feed of the campus, so all of the equipment may or may not move, but we're trying to move as much as we can to make it work as best we can.
Yeah, we'd like to.
It's nearing the end of its useful life also, so it's an opportune moment to replace it, actually not pick it up and move it. And there you are exiting back out onto College View from the entrance that you came in before.
So it's just a way of making a really nice new gate that's connected to the fabric of the city, of the town and creates this moment of stasis on the town, so it's like a living room for the town.
And it appears that that other gate that's currently east of there will still remain?
It will, yeah.
Yeah, we still want to use that gate certainly as a service gate in particular, but also it's a natural exit from the campus in some ways.
Yeah, that's what it looked like, but I.
Yeah.
Just wanted to make sure.
It's a parking lot will be serviced from both the old end and the new end.
Yeah, so we are interested in feedback and.
That's great. And about the electrical, the last I heard, it was immovable, but if there's some.
Well, that's what we heard at first too, but we're, we're, you know, we've.
That's good.
Yeah, we just need to finalize those arrangements, yeah.
Versus the original plan, you know, like keeping that grove of trees, certainly they're all mature and having a path through there is, looks really nice. And it looks like you took the movie during the springtime, of course, all the flowers are out.
Well, we wouldn't want to show you something else.
You can identify the cherry trees because they're blooming.
So, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, what we would really appreciate this evening is your feedback. If there's things you see that you would recommend that you'd like to see changes on, if there's things you like, we'd like you to tell us what you like, because we'd like to proceed now into the design, the, the site design phase of the project to be able to make a submission to this board and move things forward. I would note to you from a technical standpoint that College View Avenue is a town road. We don't have to work with DOT for the first time ever, which is a great thing. So we'll look forward to working with you on that.
So we could discuss that crosswalk then.
Yes.
With the highway. Highway, because there are, there's people, students and others that cross there a lot, so something further in between the two other crosswalks might be, might be a good idea as you're showing.
So you think, yeah.
It is a fairly high-traveled road as well, just, just to note that as part of.
Yeah, I've got one question. Go ahead, I'm sorry, Carl.
Just saying, that's a concern to watch, you know, as you're looking at the pedestrian mix with the, with the cars.
The, the parking lot that your proposal seems a little smaller than what's currently there and parking is always an issue on that road. Now, what's the, you think that there's enough for capacity there and, and it won't spill over onto College View because that's, that's a challenge as is right now for anyone going who wishes to shop in that area or tend one of the restaurants or whatever?
Understood entirely. As we developed the plan, we've looked at the parking and feel it works with what we have now. We do have alternative options to potentially expand and adjust the parking to add a few more spaces here and there. Part of the reason we wanted to come here is to talk through your concerns like that. As you know, we would now start to meet with staff and the departments, so we'll get the traffic engineer and we'll get planning and engineering and work through some of those details so we can refine the exact number of spaces we're proposing into the model and get it incorporated in, so that we can make sure we address all of that.
The, the lot as it's designed is an increase over what we have currently.
Oh, it is, because it looks like it's a little smaller.
Yeah, no, it's, it's actually.
It's bigger, okay.
Somewhat of an increase over what we have currently. I would also just note that we, that the function that the building is serving is already a function on campus, so the, the vehicles that are coming to the campus currently for admission or for career education are largely parking in this lot as it is because it's one of our main lots on campus. And so now what we're doing is we're moving the, the building closer to that. That could shift some traffic patterns and so forth within the campus itself, but we don't expect, this isn't like we're adding a new function to the campus altogether. So we don't expect it to increase the number of cars that are coming to campus. It's just a matter of sort of the circulation within the campus that may be changing with the relocation of these functions to the edge. But we are, as Ken says, we're, you know, willing to and happy to work with the appropriate departments on what the count should be, whether we have enough and maybe tweaking in a couple of other locations if we can. We just note that, you know, as you will all remember, you also approved another lot for us just a little while ago and that lot has now been completed, which is also on the north edge of campus, a little bit further east. That was an addition of 40 spots.
Yeah, behind the other building.
Yeah, that was behind Kenyon. It was an addition of 40 spots and that's now open and really looks great, so. So we're, we're working on that edge, but that, that was one.
That's good. So can I interpret what you said, that right now the, that the people who drop their kids off at the admissions houses there come and park in this lot?
I mean, I mean.
Well, at least some of them.
At least some of them do, yes. Because the, where admission is currently is right behind Maine and any of you that have come to campus and tried to find parking in the center of our campus.
Yes.
It's pretty hard, so, so, yeah.
Yeah, remember you made, a few years back, you made the whole effort to move all the parking to the edges and keep it more pedestrian in the center.
Yeah, and I, I would add that, you know, it's been a longstanding, at the time that I've been at the college, which is a long time, through like three campus master plans, there's an effort to move parking towards the edge. And the real fundamental reason for that is to have a pedestrian core to the campus. And, you know, right now, when there's a little bit of parking in the middle of campus and there's something like admission building sitting in the middle of campus, a lot of people are going to try, try to drive there. And so by moving admission and moving parking to the outskirts in, in various ways, you're really able then to create a pedestrian core to the campus, which is, you know, as Marian points out, it's really a landscaped campus, it's an arboretum, the spaces between the buildings and, you know, the, the walking paths are what make it really a beautiful experience for our students and a safe experience. And so, you know, this is part of, longer, it's a big way of saying, it's just part of a bigger strategy to, you know, create a campus landscape.
I mean, where does that, you know, if you, if you wind up unable to move that electrical or, or it's reduced or you can't move all of it, what kind of screening are you thinking of for that? Similar, similar wood to much the.
There is actually in the model, if you saw it, there is a screening that's there now that has some of the HVC and the electrical equipment that's currently for the building and you'll see it here as a really small, that would just adapt in size around it, but it is a solid, large-type structure around it.
Okay.
With appropriate venting as required, that type of thing, but for the most part it is screened, solid.
And it has to be accessible for.
Correct.
For maintenance and whatnot, but.
One other question, now, when you vacate to the current admissions house, are there plans for that and is that connected with this project?
No, we have ideas for how we would use that space. It's a relatively small building, it's probably at most 5,000 square feet of, of space, you know, so it's a relatively small kind of function on campus right now. We have ideas, but no, no concrete plans yet, so. But it will be reused for sure, yeah. Before we leave the, the topic of parking, I did want to just add that, you know, one of the things we'd be interested in a conversation, you know, if you're, you're up for it, is to talk about whether there are ways that during particular times, we could actually share some of that on-campus parking along the north edge with the local Arlington Business District businesses. So, you know, if that's something you'd be interested in talking about at another time, we'd be happy to have that kind of conversation.
Yeah, I was actually, I was actually thinking of that a little while ago, so.
I was kind of curious about the, you had to walk around the building, but I was also thinking that the conversation about the crosswalks, the pedestrian, the kind of this business, the flow of, of business in college activity is mostly focused along College View, on the north side of College View. There is a sidewalk in parallel parking on the south side and then there's this kind of no man's land between that parking and the campus. How, how do you envision that area functioning? You know, how, how porous will it be or will it continue to be just separate corridors between the College View gate and this new gate? What, had you thought, had you given some thought to that?
You mean the, whether it's on campus or on the streets, the street side, sort of the sidewalk side?
Yeah, well, right now there's a sidewalk and there's parallel parking.
Yep.
That is the campus, there's really no interaction there.
Yeah.
So is that, is that, do you envision that remaining that way or?
No, I mean, we do have, we have at least one location where we're connecting the sidewalk that comes, the path that comes through the building directly with the sidewalk, you know, on College View and we're, that's where we're proposing potentially a new crosswalk there. Our question really was, we've also proposed a pathway through the woods that goes parallel to the sidewalk on the south side of College View. And one of the questions we've had to ourselves, and it'd be interesting to hear your perspective on that, is whether we, we need that pathway through the woods because we, you know, we could connect to the sidewalk and then people could use the sidewalk, which is more like being in the town, or we have another parallel sidewalk or pathway that's on campus, you know, gets you to the same place kind of thing. So is that a duplic, a duplication of, of needs and efforts and is it better to use the sidewalk? Is it nice to have the path through the trees?
And then there's actually three, there's three paths because there's the sidewalk on the retail side of College View.
Right, there's actually a sidewalk on both sides of the road and.
Yeah, so maybe there might be too many. We do have a connector to College View that is right.
We're going to pull up the site plan, whether doing that, one thing I think it's important to note and take into context here is that, you know, and I haven't used this term with them before, we almost have like the Great Wall of China here right now with that, with the tennis courts. It's a barrier. I mean, you can't get without taking this northerly route or walking along the sidewalk now onto the campus from this core area.
And you got the tall fencing around the.
With moving those tennis courts, it, it re-envisioned this area. We've got this major now new green area here.
Yep.
And, you know, how we get students and visitors from that core area to the building and into the campus is something that I think is really critical. So that's why we're wanting to open that up with you. Is it the existing sidewalk? Is it new pathways that add to this and create this opportunity for us?
Yeah. And one of the things that we've done, you can see this is a path that's existing on campus. We're pulling it across this new aligned road with Fairmont and creating a sidewalk along the edge here that has a crosswalk and a parking lot and then a crosswalk, so you can go up to Fairmont, take a left, go to the thrift shop right here. So you could actually just, you know, it's a much easier way than what we have now to get up to this retail.
But I, but I also like the, you know, from the lot, you know, with getting a sidewalk connects from the lobby out.
And then the other way is this way.
We do have a little path there. It's hard to see, I think, on this.
This little path here.
But there's a little path there that connects to the sidewalk.
You get the crosswalk through there.
And then this one's existing and we could have a path, if we do this grove path, we could have a little path.
I know it's just an illustration, but, I mean, maybe part of the answer to this would be that the, the path that is the one that goes to College View, you know, maybe that were more prominent, you know, sort of as the main walk from the, from the College View into the, into this new building and then the path that goes off to the.
To the woods.
Towards the west maybe is, you know, subordinate to that. It's more of a.
This one, yeah.
A meandering path or something that you might, you know, if you.
Like a trail.
Like a trail, like you want to go for a walk through the woods, you have that option because it's beautiful.
Yeah.
But it's not, it's the main, you know, path.
So like you show us the smaller one there to the crosswalk would be more the main one is what you're saying?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so this would be a new crosswalk.
No, I think, I think you're right, Mike. I think you want to encourage the people to go onto College View and not stay on the main path.
Right.
Within the campus, so I would almost do away with that, the one that is on the top.
Yes, I don't know if you have to do away with it or make it more, like I said, more subordinate or more trail-like versus like, you know, a.
People walk through that area, there's no path there now, obviously, and people walk through there. I mean, frequently you'll see, you know, people on picnic blankets with their lunch or with their kids in that area under the trees, you know, by that corner. And there's no path there now, so people are using that space without a path and the question is, you know, I mean, I, I wa, I go back and forth because I hate hardscape. I don't want to add paths when you don't need them, but I also like the idea of a looping way that's natural to get around campus.
Yeah.
If that's what you want to do.
Activating that gate that's existing, that's so pretty. But there are a lot of people under the trees on blankets and having picnics, so a path would prevent that in a way, so maybe we shouldn't, maybe we shouldn't do it. We have been talking about potentially not doing any paths and seeing what the students do and then paving that.
I think that, that leaves you with all straight lines, which I'm not always.
Design your lines, yeah.
That's not what we want.
We want to keep the big grass area open, I assume, you don't want to have.
Yeah, exactly.
Cut through there.
Tons of crisscrossed paths there.
So speaking of straight lines, I'm an engineer, I like straight lines. I wonder if you can talk about how the, the new building here will interact with the Indian Institute, because I assume many of the people that are coming to visit the, the admissions building will, will be staying at the Indian Institute. I don't see any connections there to that and that direction if you're expecting them to walk along Raymond and then follow the paths from there.
Yeah, I mean, that's, you know, it's funny that you mentioned that because it's something that I just thought about recently, you know, that my, my thinking has always been that the people staying at the institute would go to the roundabout and then come into campus, you know, from that direction, because there are paths that come from the building that intersect with Raymond, you know, sort of north of the, north of where the institute ends, kind of in that general location. But if people are entering by Joss, by the roundabout at college and then wanting to get to this building, you know, right now, it would mean that they go up on the path that currently goes along the tennis courts and then take a right and come into that entrance by college, by College View, so something to think about.
And Andy, that's a really good question because I would bring up, you remember as a part of our approvals for the institute, a certain portion of this area and the tennis courts were to be used for, in the parking management plan with the institute. So we, we need to continue to use a portion of this lawn area and that existing area as a part of what we're going to do there.
It's a good, good point. Where would we make that connection? I think we were thinking through this brick gate.
Mm-hmm.
But is there another place?
The end will be down further, right?
I mean, that's the existing side, yeah, so you're leaving that existing sidewalk toward the tennis courts and then just tying off from there.
Ben and Peter, what are, what are your thoughts?
Something has to connect.
Too soon, I mean. Too soon, for me. I've got another question or, or point, uh, unless you're still, are you waiting for an answer, Carl?
No, I'm, I'm good, I'm just kinda looking at the sidewalk.
Oh, okay. Uh, I noticed that, right now, as Carl mentioned earlier, is that the, the south side of College View, there's just a sidewalk and also a barrier there. Uh, and, uh, is that a, a required barrier for the campus? Because I noticed even along Raymond, there's, there's a stone wall there, plus the gate, and then you've got what looks like almost a guardrail type of thing along, uh, College View. Because what I was thinking is to maybe make it more welcome, and along, uh, Raymond, you have the benches more park-like, et cetera, and, uh, maybe if you got rid of, of that barrier and kind of created little areas there where people could sit on a park bench under the trees or something like that. But right now, there's, there's just a barrier there.
Yeah.
So that sidewalk, when I park on that side, I use it only to get to the crosswalk, so I can get to the other side.
Yeah, I think the stone wall on College View goes to the, if I remember correctly, goes to that, that crosswalk that exists.
Okay.
Yeah, around there, and then it stops, yeah.
But we should, if it goes towards the building, we should get rid of it, you're right.
Well, I, just an idea, just because you're looking to kind of make it more inviting, because I do notice that people do use the benches along Raymond.
On the other side, right?
Right, on the other side.
On the west side of it.
Right, on the west side. Because they're there, and so the lawn is there, and so they sit there and they, they talk, whatever.
The new entrance from Fairmont straight across, is that only gonna be in, and then you gotta go through the other end of the parking lot, or it's gonna be two-way? Two-way. It'll be a full?
It'll be a full-function in, in, in intersection with stop signs at all four corners.
Actually, that strengthens Mike's comment about strengthening that, that mid-block crossing, because that four-way, that four-way intersection as a three-way now, it's really busy. So, and although there are good crosswalks there and the bus stop, although it's pedestrian-friendly, it is really busy, and to the extent you can maximize and emphasize that mid-block connection, it will make a better pedestrian experience.
The one that exists already, that mid-block connection that's already there, sort of that the...
No, the one that you were...
The one that we're adding.
That you were proposing.
Yeah.
I forget, with that, with that crosswalk you have currently from, from the circle on, on College, that's gonna be coming out, is that, I mean, right now it comes up to just a stone wall, so is that gonna be broken through?
No, the, the, is the stone wall gonna be continued? No.
No, I meant the, to get to the sidewalk along the tennis courts.
Right.
Right now, there's nothing that connects to that, so if it comes off of, from Raymond, you know, from the College intersection on Raymond, we can connect to that, to that sidewalk inside of, you know.
It's a big...
So that would tie in the, the institute to...
So you're saying right in here?
Um, down further, down further.
Down here.
There's a crosswalk there already, coming from the institute, yeah.
Yeah, right at the end.
There's a stone wall, you can penetrate through that.
Cars are blasting through this.
There's a gate down at the Joss gate right there. So that's further down, but, that's further down, but there's a crosswalk up further that... There's one here, correct. You might, you might go just directly to that sidewalk.
Well, when you come to the sidewalk, you'd rock, walk up, but there is the stone walls here, and this is the back of the tennis, so the thought would be potentially that there is that gate here, which is more of a, a proud gate that the campus has to be walking in, you could walk in right along Joss, and then we have the new walkway.
If somebody's coming from the institute and they wanna go to the, to the new building, that, that's, you know, going all the way around the, the roundabout to get down to it.
I think it has to be considered, and I don't think we've really seen, we haven't done a matchup of what's happening there from a landscape perspective, but we should, it's a good idea.
And, uh, I guess the only other thing I could think of, the, the new intersection, it's probably not big enough, but even for a mini roundabout or anything like that, has there been any thoughts of that, or...
So, we had that idea in our head, but Phil Greeley told us that it would not, it's not big enough to gain the truck traffic that we have coming through that intersection that would be using the old existing gate, and the trucks would literally have to drive right over the top of the roundabout.
Um, what do, what do board members feel about architecture? We've had that discussion in previous projects, uh, this is very light and airy, it's, it's basically glass and wood. I've seen other work from this firm up, up at Walden Pond, was it open? Although I do remember the doors being very heavy to open.
Did you guys see it, Walden Pond?
I was there a few years ago, yep. And, uh, it's very pretty, it looks nice.
Well, we really appreciate the opportunity to come before you. We think this is a great opportunity to completely rethink this side of the campus and create, uh, basically a new front door. Thank you for having us.
Thanks for the presentation, and we'll take a closer look at the model for a couple minutes.
Yeah, and I think we need to terminate the meeting, right?
Yeah, we'll do that. Have a good holiday, everyone.
Thank you.
So at this point, I believe we terminate the meeting. Move to second, call the question, votes in favor.
Aye.
Impose, motion passes 4-0. Thanks, everyone, good night.
Thank you, good night.
Happy holidays.
And safe trip home.